I will call to order the Oak Park Public Library Board of Trustees' regular meeting for August, August 26th. Will the secretary please take the role?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, trustee Burt Martinis?
Here.
Trustee Barton?
Here.
Trustee Fairfax?
Yeah.
Trustee Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Wilkinson?
Here.
Trustee Yamona?
Here.
And President?
Here.
Right, and first order is to approve the minutes from the July 22nd regular meeting.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Extensions? All right, the minutes from July have been approved, and Ellsworth, we have some public comment?
Yes, we received a public comment about the electronic access to magazines and newspapers being limited, and advocating that we consider returning card copies and putting back issues for folks who won't. After this, Lee and I and our six chairmen, that patron submitted this, we had a really good conversation. It got like information to share, everybody was on the same page. I asked if we would like this public comment to still be shared, and he said it was resolved, but because it was submitted as a public comment, I'd like to just acknowledge that we received it. We had a conversation, and we've continued a little bit of email since the meeting, but I think that we're in a good place. And he had some really, really great questions about how do we decide, print versus electronic? How do you track usage? Sort of what are the pros and cons? And it's always a real pleasure when people will reach out and ask those questions, because we have lots of information to share, but it's hard to get it out to folks who aren't as experienced. It was, I appreciate the interaction, and like I said, I think that we're in a good spot. But we'll certainly share if we want to continue communication. And this is not a public comment, but we have Missy Call here, who's from Anson Lake in the room. Just wanted to acknowledge she's good.
I don't see that we have anyone here for public comment. Trustee comments and calendar, I guess I will ask specifically today for the financial committee. Colin, would you prefer to do finance committee updates during the trustee comments? Or would you like us to wait until?
How was, how were you structuring your briefs for governance committee?
Oh, I haven't put that together yet, so you get to leave.
This isn't certain stuff, like we can move it later, but.
It's a lot of stuff that is repeat of what Billy's going to say. So I feel like it makes sense for, as Billy speaks, I can comment on what we heard in the finance committee. I think that's the way to go.
Okay, do you have any notes or anything else that we want to attach to the minutes afterward?
Yeah, we have briefs, and then we have four minutes of the, that I passed, Ellsworth.
Okay.
So we will, who knows, in the following month, regular packet for board review. The timing doesn't work to put them into the current month packet.
Right, so it'll be with the minutes from today's?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. And then Billy, you're okay with us doing finance committee update at the same time we talk about budget? All righty, trustee comments, does anyone else have any other trustee comments?
I would like to encourage people to go to the ILA trustee day in October. I know Lisa said that I'm the only one that registered for it, and I've never been. But I think it would be, especially for those of us that are new to this job, would be very informative. It's a daily programming, just for trustees, as opposed not in October 9th, 10th?
The 14th.
Or 15th, you know, one of those days.
9th, 14th?
Yeah, I am fast to be registered. That's how I started the conversation of like that if we're an ILA member conversation, remember?
So I will do that.
Thanks, I don't know where we landed for that, though, like the rest of it, if we should be members or not. That's I think what the holdup was.
Oh, because there's a, there's a discount, right, if we're members versus not?
Yeah.
Okay, can we just default that if we're going, we're not members yet, that you let us know when we make ourselves members before?
Well, she did the whole, she did the whole thing for me. She, she's a membership and joining, and I think it's worth it. There's a lot of information as members, you know, there's a membership directory, if nothing else, for other trustees that we can, you know, contact. I think it's, I think it's helpful, so I just wanted to give a plug for it.
I thought I had, I said yes to that as well.
I thought I had. We'll do it again, if anything's happening.
I saw that you know you have a ILA, you want ILA as well.
Is the trustee day a specific day?
Yeah.
It's the 16th. It's the 16th, oh, 16th. I couldn't take off.
I was just making updates in October.
No, it's like a three day.
Yes, I think it's, I think it's, yeah, it is, it was just one day.
Okay, so it's just the 16th that's the trustee day? Okay. The only other two items that we have listed on the calendar here. The board strategic planning retreat was moved to September the 14th, still 9am to 1. And then our regular board meeting, September 16th?
Yes, it's earlier September.
Because we had a holiday. Has that been updated in the calendar?
Yeah, I think so.
I was gonna say, it's updated on a cyclone calendar, so.
And for the, the finance committee, we're always gonna meet, or at least always attempt to meet, the Tuesday before the board meeting. So I know I mean, I said September 11th, but it must be September 9th. Yeah, that's, oh, it is 11th.
It is 11th?
Right, we talked about this, Billy, yeah, the time, it's too much, yes, exactly. It is Thursday, September 11th, it's 6pm.
If I may, it's the timing, we also do the financial reports and get them finalized and shared, because the timeline, we need to go to September 11th.
Okay, that's great. Finance. You said 16?
Yep.
And then can we have the finance committee meetings added to the regular trustee calendar moving forward?
Yes, and there's a question of when, when the other committees become established, have a schedule weekend on board if you'd like.
That would be lovely, yes. Executive Director's report.
Just a suggestion of calendars, because I'll bring this up with Aga, but just thinking about like coordination. What some of the governing bodies do is like, I'll do three months of like approving like committee dates and meeting dates, and then like kind of say the rest are TDD or like tentative dates. And so we could think about that as we make a more full calendar.
Yeah, I think at the beginning, we plan to meet monthly, and then after the budget in November, then we'll discuss if it makes sense, you know, about if we should be meeting monthly or not.
Okay.
So yeah, we could say up until the end of the year, what we expect are, we're probably gonna meet monthly until the end of the year.
Do you feel comfortable just adding them to the, to the Google Calendar?
Sure, yeah, sorry, we'll try to share, yes.
Yeah, and then just tagging in the board, Billy, Ellsworth?
Yeah.
Lee, everybody?
Sure.
And that way, we're at least all vague they were.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. Any other trustee comments or anything else you'd like to add to the calendar? Executive Directors' Report.
We'll add to what's written, but Susan's back, and we're glad.
Welcome back, Susan.
Welcome back.
And having any quick questions? I do want to draw some attention to the civic literacy librarian position, which was highlighted in the report. We are very excited about this position, having the opportunity to build this. Alex Skinner and a panel which she put together are actively doing interviews, so the ball is rolling quickly. And as I noted here, really robust pool of applicants, really skilled folks. So I'm looking forward to seeing how things, how they move forward with the position. But it was, we were so pleased to be able to put together, and to see that response really felt awesome. So eager to bring that person on board. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I was gonna ask, was there something specific that led us to, for civic literacy librarian?
It was an intersection of several things, including the sort of the clear need for more curation around civic literacy in general. Thinking about how people are engaged with their local governments, or actively in their communities in general. And then also thinking about work flows in terms of who works with, you know, the leadership leaders and other groups, who works with people who are interested in running for office. Just all of these pieces can come together as an opportunity to create a new librarian position. This feels like a very long time. And it fits really well with our library and practice model. We have people focused in different areas, and this feels very organic to our reflection.
I'm so excited about this position, and I've been wanting to ask you all sorts of things. I, which department are they going to sit in?
Adult Services.
Adult Services, cool. And so will they be like probably in the community quite a bit? I imagine, right, like they're gonna be engaging?
Yes, I think that, so they will also have a full suite of desk hours, like most librarians. So they will be on desk probably around 20 hours a week. But in their off desk time, we anticipate programs outreach community engagement. And I think that their work will ebb and flow a little, depending on what's going on in the community and where they can be most effective, so. And Alex did a really nice job defining scope in the job description, but also leaving space for the vision of the person who comes there. So we may have candidates who come in that would take things in a little bit different directions, and we always celebrate that when we can lean into what people are imagining. But we do absolutely imagine quality of community engagement.
That's so great, I mean, I'm, I'll bring this up more with Aga, but I just envision there being overlap there, so it's exciting.
Any other questions, comments for Ellsworth on the Executive Directors' Report?
Have you gotten any texts yet?
I have not, but I'm eager, I'm eager for texts. And I sent it out to all staff, and I will request it on my next business card, it's my email signature. I found that so helpful in my last couple positions, because sometimes people, it feels like a burden to call or write an email, but if you could just shoot off a text, that has worked really well with other persons, so. Good stuff.
That's great, I was hoping, after carrying the agenda and search process, that you did that before, and so you did that here.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be good.
One more question, now, now, so since I didn't see that, it was in adult services. So like I'm imagining youth are also an important like population to capture with like civic literacy. Do you envision there being overlap there, or is it gonna be like rigidly adult services?
No, I don't want it to be rigid at all. Our librarians and other staff kind of collaborate pretty actively. So again, I think they'll be ebbing flow through sort of seasonal changes. But I think that this position is a great fit to work with middle technical services and to services. And we love to find those opportunities for kind of cross generational programs too. So I think as we talk about what, what civic literacy really means for us and for the community, that will start to shape that. But there's, there's no age gatekeeping of that position.
I just had to ask, but I think there would be. I, I guess I asked also because I have shared this with a lot of people in like with my network, and I know people applying are really excited about it. And Clark Waters is like really invested in this work, and so I think there could be a partnership with the village. And like, she does a lot of work with youth, and getting them connected to elected officials and stuff. And so understanding the democratic process, like I think, yeah, I just, I'm excited, I can't wait.
Yeah, what does she call, that's like, stay with a?
I don't know. I haven't done that.
Junior deputy clerk or something, day and.
She like has mentor, like a part, like it's a high school student pairs with elected for a day or something, so it's a nice opportunity.
All right, we'll move on to staff reports, Strategic Priorities Report.
This was a hard month to pull highlights, because I feel like there's a lot of really good content, but I will, I'll just mention a few things. The Friends book sale was hugely successful. I know there are people in this room who contributed to that. The Friends did a really great job with organization, plans, execution. And staff did a really great job of helping make space and to contribute as much as they could. I've shared this with a few people, but the last time I worked for OPPL, the book sale was at the high school. And when I heard that it had moved to the library, I thought, I cannot get my head around. That feels like such a, such a different environment. And seeing it in action, I feel like it works so great, which is great. So everybody's energy, I think, really paid off, and I think the Friends feel good, and I think the staff feels good, and I think the community feels good, so a big success all around. We called out here that Rob Simmons, who's the Director of Social Services and Public Safety, is representing the library on the village's task force on response for unhoused residents of Oak Park. We're so proud that Rob can, can use his expertise in this way and, and do that connection between the community's work and what we do here. I would also call out the maize branch replacement of the gas water heater with an electric water heater. Not a project that many of our patrons will get to see, but I think it's, it's worth talking about these process pieces in being environmental stewards and trying to, to care for our facilities in a way that also contributes to evolving the community. And we did some work around disability pride, including the annual disability pride march and parade. We did an idea box around disability pride, lots of positive community comments about disrepresentation and the way that the community feels included and represented. We also did a day to support BIPOC health enrollers. It was sort of a multifaceted event with speakers and activities. Staff worked really hard to try to make this as inclusive and accessible as possible. And again, we got positive feedback from attendees, I think there's interest in trying, in next year, and kind of building on that success. But happy to answer any questions about any of the items we had.
I wanted, well, I wanted to ask a question, but I also wanted to highlight one of the comments about, I believe it's referring to the idea box display that says, this display encapsulates why I moved to Oak Park. That was really heartening to see that people feel like what's happening in the library resonates and reflects why they chose to live here. I did want to ask, I know it said, now I've lost it, there we go. That we would be getting an update from Rob and the village, it says, presented in September. If we could, maybe if you could flag us down as far as what we hear back. I know that many of the unhoused residents of Oak Park do spend a bit of their time here at the library. And I would just like, I would like to number one, get to see some of the fruits of Rob's hard work, but also I would like to see what the village's plan is. So I will look out for it, but on the off chance that I miss it. If you could flag us down for the outcome of how he's. I'm kind of sad I missed the chance to touch person.
I don't know, that, this, this month, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Well, I know we talked a little bit about the book fair last month, but I think the Friends also had their celebratory get together. Were you able to go?
I was there, Colin was there, Mika was there. It was really, I thought it was really fun, it was, and the presentation was great. I mean, it was informative, but also kind of fun and interesting. And to see everybody coming together to, to celebrate a success was, was really amazing.
Yeah, well, forward, I don't know if, did everyone receive their presentation? Okay, well, we should forward the presentation that we got and the minutes, do the, the Friends minutes go into our packet? Or do you, do you all need them, or?
We posted on, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so I can, I can send that report, it's really.
Yeah, because you, you had the presentation too, right? I don't know.
Really informative, and I sent it to the staff, but I can send that to the board.
Yeah, you guys are gonna like it. It shows like the, the, and I don't want to rain on Mika's break, as she was gonna give the update on that, but like they sold all the Chicago books, the local books, they were having, struggling with the PoliSci books and a little bit. Yeah, people aren't interested in that. They also weren't interested in the, they were giving away gifts, right? And one of them was a, some crude things about Trump, no, I'm one of those either. So, Mika, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Are we giving this report now?
Oh, yeah, I don't want to put everything, sorry about that.
They, they, a forty one thousand, forty seven, forty one thousand, forty seven dollars. And the net, the net is thirty six thousand, one twenty four, which was more than even, I think, when they were still at high school, so.
Yeah, I think it was one of the highest ever, right?
I was gonna say, that sounds like a lot more, because I think the last place they did at the high school, like, the net didn't quite clear nine or 10. So that's.
Yeah, so they were very, they were very happy to go to, I mean, one forty, so it's like, awesome.
All right, well, we won't steal any more of your thunder, we'll, we'll wait for the fun, but. Anything else on strategic priorities reports? Anybody else have any other questions or anything they wanted to call attention to? You're right, this was a hard month.
The, yeah, the celebration of the, the teen, not the teen, the preteen space, what's it called, little school?
Yeah, the mural.
Yeah, the mural, that's really wonderful, too.
Yeah, and multiple staff have expressed appreciation since then, so I think.
Yeah.
All right, additions and separations. I'm anticipating maybe next month is when we will see some of the summer hires fall. We have a. We had a title change in technology services?
Yes. Just a little title change. I don't know a lot of that crap, I don't know if we need to do that more.
Um, yes, so his title, kind of, he's very interested, and has been helping us with cybersecurity. So it just made sense to kind of make that his title, so that's his focus going forward.
Okay.
I was looking at, but there's one difference.
Okay, so it's basically the same thing, we're just leaning into sort of the direction you would like to go. Fantastic.
Is that a level change?
Yeah, it's just a title change. Any other questions on the additions, separations, or staff changes? All right, moving forward to financial reports.
So these financial reports are the regular monthly finance reports. And we're happy to answer any questions folks have. I hope they are as expected for the part of the point of the year we're in. But happy to answer questions.
Did we ever figure out the parking lot revenue?
Yeah, that from, or something, I heard.
Yeah, so did the. Is the parking revenue report in the agenda? Yeah, just sort of in general, the revenue from that is estimated conservatively, because we don't want to over, over budget for it. And we, you know, in the report, I said a little bit more about the, the percentage of parkers who are there for over two hours, which is when the fees begin. And we, in the past, we've had some performance issues with the gates and the equipment that we use for parking. Those have been largely solved, so we, we feel like we have a more accurate picture now. And, and as we move forward in that budget, we will, we'll be as accurate as we can get it. But we do, we tend to budget conservatively, especially volatile revenues, because we would, we would rather not. If the budget is going to, to be off track, we'd rather not be on lines like that.
This is really interesting, though, like the, the percentage of folks that stay. I mean, the majority, the vast majority of them.
Eighty seven percent are two hours a while.
Our state two hours or less.
I don't think that there's any, I think whatever anecdotal evidence we have is anecdotal, because the real evidence is that eighty seven point six, nine percent are staying here for over two hours.
Are staying under two hours.
So that's great.
Yeah.
And it raises questions of priority, because we have lots of people who park for short term, so that means there's lots of access for people with short term needs. We have people with longer term needs. It's great to meet that, and it means that we're reducing the, the short term parkers. So either, either decision, whether we, we use those fees to steer for the longer or shorter amount of time, have access ramifications. With the number of spots we have, the data, the story tells me is that the system may as well. But I think it's, it's always worth unpacking both the hard data and what we hear from people in their experience using the parking garage.
One thing I would say is that the fact that eighty seven percent use it for two hours or less does not mean that they don't have a need to be here for more than two hours.
True.
They may adjust how long they're staying based on the fees.
Yes.
Like they may come once, and then, you know, not realizing how much it racks up, and then when they're leaving, and then make sure not to do that the next time.
The biggest, this is, a missing part of the story is we don't try to track people who park and leave, who don't come a lot. And it seems logical that people who park and go elsewhere would be in most of our duration categories. If we wanted to do a real deep dive, we could use the tools that we have to try to figure out pieces like that. We haven't yet, but if, if there's more information that would help, or think about the future of parking at the library, you know, we're, we're happy to start compiling that.
I mean, this is seven, almost eight months worth of data, and 150 people were there for the six to 12 hour mark, so I don't think that's. I mean, if people are using it for that, it's so negligible, I feel like there's other things to solve before we dive into this. Finding those 150, those 150 people. Also, like you said, there used to be some issues, and I know a concern we used to have was, does the parking pay to keep itself in order? And so I'm not terribly upset that there's a little surplus this year in case there is something else that happens, if there is more parking lot work that needs to be done, that we're not eating into other line items. Yeah, I am interested to know, are there people who would stay longer if not for the cost?
Is there a capacity issue or something like that that we're concerned about?
Thank you.
About raising the prices or like, what's the issue? Sorry.
Some patrons who weren't leaving, you know, trying to pay the parking.
Yeah.
When I was here. Like complained about and said that they, you know, they had trouble with the fact that it costs so much to park at the library.
Gotcha.
And that, you know, they didn't, they stayed and didn't realize that it was going to be that much and just having issues and.
I think there was also, there was a public comment somewhere. Not a public comment here, but in relation to the library saying, parking going to our public library is expensive. I think we found that person. There's not no parker. I don't remember.
Yes, there was.
That there was a, there was a comment about the parking being expensive. And then when we saw that there was a little bit of a surplus, we wondered, are we putting up a financial barrier to folks coming to spend time here? But.
But what, what is the, the net that we're actually getting? Where's the cost of the?
Like the cost of. I was gonna say, here on page fifty-seven, it tells the, that's where Ellsworth broke down the parking rates by time and then the percentage of tickets for each of those time brackets.
We'd gotten like, we'd gotten to, I think, seventy-five percent of our annual amount like in last month. So it's, it just, I don't know. I, I think monitoring it is fine. I don't have anything else to say.
So it was a surplus in that we budgeted the revenue we thought we'd get and we had more revenue than that. So it's, it's not like there's extra, you know, surplus can kind of mean different things in different parts of the budget. This meant we, we estimated low.
Is there a fixed cost? What is the fixed cost of maintaining the parking lot?
I would say that there is not a fixed cost, but we could run a month-to-month analysis of, of what goes into it. I don't know that we could separate out like power costs from lights and things like that.
We're gonna see some of those line items in the budget to the right around maintaining the parking lot and things like that.
The reason I was asking is because I was just looking at these numbers thinking, if we change the forty-six hours to seven fifty and six to twelve hours to ten dollars, it couldn't address some of those concerns.
Twenty dollars is a lot.
Without actually having that much of an effect because this doesn't seem to fit those ticket prices for the numbers of tickets that there are. It doesn't seem that substantial.
I think, I think the six to twelve hour price is meant to be a deterrent.
Yeah.
So that folks don't come and park at the library and like go to La La Palooza.
Because there's not that many spots, right? That's my.
Yeah, there's not, there is a fixed number of spots.
Yeah, because it's like, it is a finite amount. So I know we want to be generous, but like, how does this affect? You, I think Ellsworth, you told me in the middle, like to me, I always come here and there's a spot. But you were saying in the middle of the day, it's, it's low, right?
Yeah.
Because I've come.
There are definitely times.
Thirty years ago, I had a little.
There's, there's rarely parking story times really long. There are other peak times. And then there are other times when, whoops, there's not really a parking. It just depends on.
It seems like it will change this.
I agree.
But I'm excited to have the information.
Yeah.
To work with now, so, thank you. Um, any other questions, comments, concerns on the financial reports? And I'm sorry, I had to write another video.
I'm gonna say something I said at my first meeting. Is there any way you can also get these in Excel format? Is that not possible? Just the, the line item budget for the, for the monthly expenditures revenue and like the whole, the whole, this whole checks, the whole thing?
Do you want them in Excel because you want to manipulate them?
Yeah, just I want to see like, yeah.
I think that we could send them to the form.
That's what I'm saying, because that's what I'm asking.
I don't think there's a way to put them in the packet in.
I don't need, yeah, I would just like to have them in Excel because it would just be easier for me to quickly look at the things I want to look at instead of having to flip through.
Or do the filtering and the sorting.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't necessarily want to every month, but there's, it could potentially. It would just be, it makes more sense for me and my brain to see like, the check to spare grants or even, you know, some of the line item issues to see them in Excel. Just that's the way my brain, if it's possible.
I believe so. I think we download them in SPES, but I think we can also download them in Excel.
If it's, if it's more work than that, I can live without it.
For sure, the statement of revenue and expense, that's not an issue at all. It's the check, the check, um, I have to.
Okay, if you can, that would be, that would be helpful for me at least.
If we try to, and you find yourself doing the same sort over and over, let us know.
Okay.
Because the other thing is, we could adjust reported on if there are things that.
To my brain?
I mean.
Are you sure? Yeah.
Really helpful, then we, you know, we bring that back to the group.
Okay.
Hey, does it make sense to?
And if.
Because if, if then you didn't have to do the sort. We just gave you the information that way. We skipped stuff.
Yeah, and also if it turns out that it is really onerous, if it's really glorious to do it, I will live with this too. Because I don't think it's, but it's just, to me, the way my brain works, it would be easier if it was, if it was just, like you said, a download option.
And there's some notes from that, just so take away. And Billy, please tell me if I say anything wrong here. He was, he was one percent under budget, which is seen here and I think is notable, right? That we're on budget. And I think for the end of the year, you were saying that we're gonna finish probably under budget slightly, and then that we haven't gotten, um, our, Cook County hasn't issued, hasn't issued the bill yet, right? But that happens, but that we don't expect there to be any issue.
Correct.
Yeah.
If I'm making this up the table.
Do you guys want to cover this now or do you want to cover budget?
Oh, so, so you want to wait for the budget or this is finance?
I don't believe in the first.
Okay.
Oh, come on.
Um, to, to just clarify what Colin was saying. Yeah, we're, we're, we're in a good spot with a, you know, month ending July, about one percent under budget with expenses. We are, we've done our exercise to project our expenses through the year and we do project an operating surplus. So that's, this is good news.
Great.
We're, and Colin went on to talk about the property tax installments. As we all know, our property tax bills have not shown up in our mailbox yet, or at least mine hasn't, if you're at, let me know. But it has not yet. When they're, they were scheduled to mail in August first. If they're mailed in August first, they usually do around September first. We usually have some, some of that property tax payments coming in by this point of the year. We have not yet. We still anticipate that to be coming in this year. The last I heard is that property tax bills are a month behind. That would put it Labor Day, it goes right, you know, right around late September first.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard any news yet on them. So, you know, but there's good news here. The good news is we have a month ending, month ending July thirty-first. We have about six months of operating cash available. So, you know, we, we're fine for a few months. We don't have to worry at this point. But if we get to December and we're saying we don't, we haven't heard anything, us, like every other taxing body in Cook County is gonna be freaking out. So, no alarm bells yet, just something to be aware of. And we're still waiting on those property tax installments to come in.
And this is, this is not the library's first rodeo doing this late tax bill situation?
Correct. Two years ago, it was, it was, it was late. Last year, it was on time, and then we had to lay again this year.
We should just change what on time is.
Yeah.
Make October first on that. Any other questions on financial reports? Or any other month-to-month questions for Billy?
I'm just out of curiosity, um, uniform shirts? Are, what are uniform shirts? Is that just the, the library t-shirts or something?
So we have multiple departments for, well, facilities mostly.
Oh, gotcha.
And public safety.
Gotcha.
We're uniformed shirts.
Okay, that makes sense.
That was a public safety hire. We were working in shirts so they can identify themselves.
Right, right, that makes sense.
I'm wearing a uniform for school, so it always catches my eye.
I have questions, but I think I'm gonna save them for the budget discussion. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the July twenty-twenty-five resolution on disbursements.
So.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Suzanne, seconded by Colin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? All right, resolutions on disbursements have been approved and we will go into additional reports. IGOV?
Um, we had a meeting a few weeks ago. It's a great group. I think everyone at this point has been assigned from the various bodies. I, the first, now two meetings have really covered like the level setting. We have a lot of newly elected and new to the boards people. And also like we got into the calendar bit, bit. So I would really love, like, during our last meeting, I got an image that just was like the second Tuesday, the third Tuesday, and showed which governing bodies had meetings. And it's like, really strange, actually. It's like every governing body chose Tuesday and then many chose fourth, which I think we are fourth, but then sometimes third. So, yeah, like, I think it's something I would really like for us to look down the line at changing. A lot of the other governing bodies are meeting at least two times a month. So it's like harder for them to change. So I hope maybe we can think about it. I think that would be a really meaningful thing so that like constituents can attend different meetings so that we can stay informed of that. So that has been a topic. Jenna Leving brought up back to school, then safety and storage messaging. And so she was trying to court me across bodies there. So I know you took that information to share that out. I didn't, I don't remember seeing it.
I don't think she did, I haven't been talking about it.
Yeah, but so that's exciting, just even having like this kind of coordinated messaging across schools. And I don't know if Parks jumps on that yet, but that's kind of the intention of the group. And for years, we've talked about having like a centralized hub like that does have things that we develop from IGOV or like different taxing body information. And so we've talked about like having a webpage. And at the last meeting, you know, I've been on it for, I've been on it for the two years before this term. And this has been something that's talked about a lot. And we had previously talked about the village. There was pushback on that. And then everyone was like, why not the library? The library seems like the obvious place anyway. And so I, I brought that up to you. I don't know, are you?
Is this hosting the website or something?
Just hosting a webpage.
Okay.
That basically is like, like, there is one document we're trying to finalize. That's like, so you're thinking about running for office? And it has some details like of what to expect campaigning, what to expect as an official. Like, things like that. Like, I think there'll be, like, what is IGOV is nowhere to be found. Like, I think the community has a lot of question marks around what IGOV is. And I'm excited about this group. I think we're like a bunch of really eager people who like want to make it happen.
What was the reasoning behind it not being the village? Because I just, like, if I'm thinking of running for office, the website I'm gonna go to is the village where I'm going to be running.
I thought that at first, too. We had a discussion about it and there were a lot of strong opinions that, you know, that the library is the place people look to for information and knowing that the civic library imposition is opening up and something that the library is making a priority. It doesn't also have to be either or. Like, it certainly, they can reference each other.
Yeah.
I personally think that both can work.
Yeah, I, I was with you. Like, I think originally I was like, the village should do this, until I met with someone from one of the school boards and they were like, actually, no. And I think some validity, too, comes from like, there's often confusion of like, are we just a part of the village? You know, like these governing bodies, do we fold under the village? And we don't want to have that look like that the township currently. Like, IGOV is such an interesting place to be because there's so much happening every, like, in every direction right now. But like even the township, Princeville just made it easier for townships to fold into their municipal bodies. And so like, that is something that, like, the township doesn't want them then make it look like it is a part of the village when they're actively trying to like separate. So I think there is like division.
Also, I remember at the last term's when we were discussing this, some of the issue with the village is that there's already confusion about where people go, whether they go to the village or the county or the school board. And so having it hosted, like, having it at the library that's kind of separate from those. Because if somebody's running for the school board, they changed where you go to, to.
Yeah, you don't go to the clerk. You go to wherever you go.
And there's some confusion.
I was gonna say, you go where.
You need the website. There's like three different places now. There used to be and now it's, some can go to the county and some go to, yeah. So having it at the village seemed to kind of make it seem like you always go to the village. Like, weight that more, if that makes sense. Whereas the library is kind of outside of that whole scenario.
I had enough to talk to communications folks about, about this meeting today. And I think we have some questions. We started by doing, dive into where, where does the information live now? And like you just said.
There is, there is not.
That, one of the questions that raises is, so where would we get the information?
Yeah, that'd be from us.
And I think the library works really hard to, and we have sort of stamp, content standards and things like that. So we wanted to kind of, what, what's the timeline look like?
Gotcha.
What, what happens if IGOV, certainly under different leadership, became less diligent in supplying, providing information? What would our sort of privacy in terms of maintaining that or not?
Yeah.
Is there any information that, who knows?
Yeah, no, those are all, that might be helpful to know what those questions are because they would help me know what we need to talk about. But I think it would start really simply. I mean, I, like, figuring out when people were meeting. I saw every governing body, their board webpage is different and their agenda is in a different place, their meeting notes are in a different place. And so it is like, it would be, I think, valuable to the community to have like somewhere that you can at least centralize the information, knowing that as soon as you click on one of the other ones, it'll look very different.
Yeah, we can, we, like I said, we're just waiting on today and we can send you more questions and thoughts. Another thing that we'll have to talk through is, is will there be a contact point on that website? And if not, if the library becomes that contact point, how would we equip our staff to answer those questions?
I wouldn't expect that from the library, but that's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll be back in touch.
Okay. No, I don't see it as putting, I don't want it to put continuous work on your staff, but I would appreciate just like a very simple page that maybe we check in every few months about. Like, I don't see, like, we maybe do one or two events a year. But I think, like, even on the village site, there's nothing that even says what IGOV is. We have vision, mission, and values, which we're rewriting now. So like, there is structure to it that I think should be somewhere. So, that's all I have for IGOV. Yeah, that's all I have for IGOV.
All right, council of governments will be a very short update because the first meeting will be September fourth. Have you heard back from anyone on the venue? I know we messaged them back and said, we could not do it, but then I did not get back.
I have not received an update.
All right, I will check in and see where, and if virtual is an option. Planet Green?
I do have an update. So Matt, it's on the Planet Green. These are the notes he issued. Gary Kuhn, of Seven Generations Ahead, will be attending the Aspen Ideas Chicago Climate Conference along with a few other bodies to discuss carbon capture strategies. Mark Berger reports that the total number of registered EVs in our park are one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven and workforce are three hundred and forty-eight, representing a twenty-eight percent increase from July two thousand and twenty-four. Discussion was had about feeling the impact of sustainability measures affordability due to the repeal of the Inflation Reduction Act. And the August meeting will be eight twenty-one and eight thirty-eight. So, Matt also shared that it seems like there are some attendance changes in, in that group and that there are less often other people from taxing bodies attending. Sharing an act of, but he will continue to participate on behalf of the library.
I'm, I'm interested in what you said there about there. I'm, I'm interested in what you said there about there had been like a massive increase in the number EVs, but then wondering if that's going to turn around because some of the tax incentives have gone away. Advocacy committee, looking at you, things that are changing in our government that are going to impact things on the ground. That might be one of the updates that we would include in some sort of messaging out to the population that a change in these taxes. You think it doesn't impact you because you don't own an EV, but does it impact your opportunity to get one or is it going to change how many EV charging stations we make available because of the percentage? Just really interesting that we're kind of getting, it, it seems like a lot of people are doing the this is the legislative with the legal change and here's how it's impacting people. You might wanna.
I just have to some of those. I want to highlight how it impacts the library. So the stations that we have, I think the job would be too much getting into sort of scope creep. I want, like I think the advocacy that we talked about, this we talked about the committee, I think the advocacy committee really needs to bring things back to how it impacts the library.
Even with the EV charging stations downstairs?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Make, make sure that that is the highlight, that that's what we're talking about.
Oh, that we're tying this back to our EVs?
Exactly.
Okay, not just in general?
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, I think that's.
Can I ask why you're saying that?
Because I think it's super important that we focus on the library and what's going on with the library because we're the library board. And so I think if we start having scope creep and mission creep and talking about other things, people stop paying attention.
It'll water down and it won't be necessarily as actionable if we're stepping too far afield of what specifically impacts the library or how the library operates.
I would, I would agree also partly because of, I mean, with scope creep could also come a lot of pressure for time, for labor and that I would feel I would be unable to meet, we collectively as a board, we not able to. So I think it's important to be very discerning about how we spend our time. I think thinking about how this might impact the library charging stations absolutely then, you know, the, the scope of these relevant questions that we might want to be thinking about. But I think it is important in principle, in brief in principle, that it is important to really think about what is the appropriate scope, just to make sure that we can meet the requirements that we.
I just about.
But we also have to use to amplify the other organizations working on these, these topics and issues.
Right, yeah.
I think that, that those communities and partnerships can really have to hear too.
One of them could be with IGO. This is actually something that we discussed in our meeting is that there is an opportunity for those of us who are on the IGO committee to think about helping interpret how some of the political and economic changes that are happening may be translating into real effects on people. But we, how we come over different, like a number of different governing bodies that have a number of different kinds of expertise. But that's something that we could share and divide among ourselves. That, that could be a role that IGO plays or at least supports. So that's just, just throwing that out there as something that we were talking about.
And thank you for the scope creep. Okay, now we can talk about the friends.
There's that much more.
Okay.
It was, it was successful. Everybody's happy. I, it was also really nice to see how the friends in the library itself creates this like community and, you know, like, which is really lovely.
Yeah.
And the one need that they were very clear multiple times, both on, at the board is they are an older, you know, organization, like they're older.
Membership, yeah.
Member, thank you. And they need people to help them the day after to carry all the boxes and things like that. And so that's kind of their very specific need. And I thought maybe that's something we could find ways to support. So that's where they're like, we need some younger membership who can carry the things.
Yeah.
Maybe folks from the middle school programs or the high school programs?
I think high schools.
Well.
Oh, we know a middle schooler totally helps.
I think she goes volunteer.
Yeah, I'm sure, right, yeah.
I think they're very nice.
They tried to give a football team to help. They tried to reach out to a number of schools and it was just the timing of it.
Yeah.
That's tricky.
No, I won't work like that. I think it has to be like specific, individual. It has to be like very personal. So they need 10 people. Like it's, it's a, it's not a huge number. They need 10 people, maybe 20. So and like we, if we could help them there, it just as, you know.
Is that, that was their big ask? Was just more?
Yeah, I mean, they weren't asking. They were just like.
No, 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 but I think that was their, cause it sounded like a really positive takeaway, but like the one piece that they said, like next year we could really use help on.
Well, every year they're like, this is, like that is, that seems to be in my, my interpretation.
Yeah. And then in membership in general, like they, somebody came up to us and was so excited that we, they thought we were joining the friends and they're like, we're.
Yeah, they are.
I mean, we are, I was like, yes, we're at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, in general too, they're looking for younger membership as well. I mean, they're looking for more people.
Have they talked about how they're looking for new members or if they're raising the support?
Yeah, do they do any supportive efforts or?
You know, I.
Do they have a follow up on social? What they do? I don't, you know, they are a separate entity from us. They're, they're, they are completely self governed and they run themselves. And so um, they've started a newsletter that they've been doing. So I'm not sure what their membership outreach, but they do have these social events for, so you know, the library to kind of draw in membership.
Is it something that could be added to one of the newsletters that they're looking for?
If, if they want to add that, they provide their own content.
Oh, they provide that.
So do they have like a register?
Yes, it's on between, it's a, it's a digital thing. It's on between the lines, during the pages, but it's a very content. So if they, I think they put it in the last one.
Yeah, I think we're all, all automatically subscribed to it too. So it might just, you know, I know we get a lot of emails, but it might show up in spam or something, but yeah.
They just targeted it.
Yeah, they just, they did one right there.
Just a little summer, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They did one on like explaining like, and it's, I, I recommend reading that, just how much effort and organization goes into making the book fair work. So they did that two months ago, but yeah, like you're right, it's a new, I only noticed it recently getting an email.
So the library does it, but it's all their content?
No, we do not do it.
Oh, they just do it individually?
They do, but we push it out. Like we said that we help them with it.
That's what I meant.
But it's their, they are a separate entity. So it's.
Right.
Their.
And you said they do two social events here.
Yeah, I mean, since I've been with them, they do a follow up on social.
So I think, you know, but, but at the end of the day, newsletters, it's, it's word of mouth, I feel like is the most effective. And so as we in our lives see people, because the Friends book sale is so popular in our community. Everybody loves it. And I, but I, like, I didn't know they had this, you know, like, so I was like, oh, well, if people know what you need it, I feel like.
I think people only think about the friends when it comes to the book sale too, like in general, people are, oh yeah, you know, because of the book sale. But, you know, in February, they're probably not thinking about it. So helping them boost their social and keep them top of mind when we talk to folks.
Yeah, when people say like, oh yeah, I love the book sale. It's like, oh, perhaps you would like to help.
Right. Or, oh, I love the library. Well, too, you know. Well, yeah, and I wonder if it would help. I mean, I was thinking social media for them, but they may need somebody dedicated to do that, but like a way to dovetail social media from them with the libraries. So like keeping the idea that they're separate entity, you know, but they post something and then the library can share it out because the library has a much larger readership, a much larger audience than they do probably.
I wonder, do we have? Sorry, my brain just stopped there for a second. I was wondering if there were like teens or, or folks who run their social for them?
I just connected them to one of my friends who wanted, who has been wanting to volunteer for Friends and there are some.
Oh, awesome.
And he's a marketing person. So maybe.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm just trying to think about the ways that, that the library can support them while still keeping that, that separation. And so, you know, if they post something and then it's amplified, or they, you know, and it's, you know, and it's not, yeah, there's just a.
I think including the Friends leadership and that kind of conversation is where the calls, I've been in libraries where the library has a lot of constructive ideas of how to amplify that voice and the Friends group response is we got this, like we're, we've got the, the flow that we like. So I, but I think that we have a number of these out in the room and, and we have the tools to, to look for.
Right now, what I heard, and what I've heard from them, what they need is just able bodies the day after. So it's as you live your day to day life.
And Colin said that they're also looking for younger membership.
I mean, sure, but like, were they really?
Yeah, they weren't, they shouldn't, no, it should have, that, that was a comment that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, sure.
It wasn't like they were saying to the board to do something about it. It was just a comment for us. So, you know, we need to obviously talk to them and see if they actually want to help or anything like that.
Oh, right. But like the, there's specifically that I heard, it's like really the day after is, like they, they have lots of volunteers during, like almost to more than they can even have shifts for, but the day after.
It's the af, it's the afternoon party.
Nobody wants to clean up after party.
And it's, that's crazy because I was so impressed when I came in here, it was like two days later and I was like.
They actually did a really good job.
Yeah, they, they're, they're.
There was not a single Eric Boxer, nothing.
They had a really solid team. Last year we had some issues with cleanup and so they made it a really great plan to make sure that they had. I think they had scheduled some youth volunteers to come the next day and none showed up. So I think this year they took it upon themselves to make sure that they're.
Yeah, it was like one person.
Okay. So I'm hearing they did have a plan to have young able bodied people. Last plan didn't work.
Last year. Yeah.
This year they realized.
They were trying to get like the football team and they were trying to get more structured volunteers and it just kind of been more working and so they took it upon themselves.
Yeah, so only approach reliable friends. That you know are gonna show up on a hot July day. Cause they are cool.
Yeah, okay.
So are they looking for suggestions? Cause they do have lots of ideas, but.
No, I'm not.
Like, yeah, they were like, I'm there to, you know, we've got some ideas, but otherwise it's just.
Yeah, I mean, we get that. I, I'm not saying they don't want ideas. They're like, that's not, wasn't, they, they are a well oiled machine.
They were like. In the cleanup phase of the book sale.
For every box you carry out, you can distribute one idea.
They, they put together a really great report that we'll share. I, I thought for some write in, look at the, it was sent to a lot of people, so I thought it was sent to the board, but they go through that, they have a survey on what they, what their membership would like, what they think of improve or, you know, they talked about success with the the youth area, right? Like the children's books area. And so they have a lot of different ideas and, and trended data, cats really into data. So you, we'll, we'll send it to them.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's really interesting. They do, they do a really good job on analysis. They.
I'm sure.
You know, and they, they understand like their resources and they think about it and they it was, it was just, I was just really impressed. I was impressed with how well they, they run their organization.
It is the most sophisticated book sale of a Friends group that I've seen in my career. I mean, and the data tracking itself is I think that many groups would just never think to even count the number of boxes. And this group has year to year data going back. I mean, that presentation was at least, at least five years, maybe more. So I think it's a, they really do an exceptional group.
That's great.
They do outreach too. Like they reach out to like other Friends groups across the nation that have like, you know, whatever interesting thing happening. And then they're like, what are you doing? How are you doing? I mean, most of them, it's like a full time job for the program. I, I, it's just amazing. Sorry, I'm just, I was.
It's really good to hear that some of them are amazing. That's nice to have.
Yeah, I didn't add it off. I'm like, oh, I want to give you some ideas. It's like, no, you guys are doing a great job.
Just to clarify. Ideas for getting volunteered. I know, that's what I meant specifically.
Well, Elmer, this was your, your first time seeing the book sale in the building? Any, any thoughts? Mostly just because I want to hear you say awesome stuff, but I will.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, like I mentioned before, I if you had asked me if I'm successful, I was like, you know, you can't do it here. And I'm so glad I wasn't here to make that. It works really well. And I think it's, I loved seeing how staff and Friends volunteers and, and patrons kind of just worked together to make this a successful event. Because it, it is a very different use of the space. And we really, really take pride and take seriously that most of our services do not require payment at point of, at point of service. And, but it, it has such a feel good vibe that I, I feel really good about. I think it did, again, like the staff after, I, because it was my first time being here for the website. I really intentionally sort of checked in with different service points throughout the day, talked to the Friends volunteers to get a sense of like, are people happy? Or is this like, are people sort of doing it, but they wish it was different? And in every stakeholder group that I talked to seemed satisfied and, and pleased. And it was sort of miserably hot. I mean, there were reasons for it not to work. And then, I mean, I think that there will always be things to learn every year that, that can be tweaked in the future, but I love the, the expansion that the Friends seem to be doing around, you know, games and puzzles and, and things that there are legitimate reasons to say no to. And instead of saying no, it was sort of like, yeah, let's try that. And then let's track the data, let's see what works. And I am very excited about the, the way that the Friends are looking at the location of sales. And the library does advocate for things, for sale items to not be next to their counterparts in the library collection. Cause I think that's confusing. But I didn't hear of a single instance of a patron, you know, having a library book mistaken me in their pile to purchase or anything like that. It just seems like it's been figured out pretty well. So I, I felt really proud of the Friends' work that day and I felt really proud of the staff work. And I also felt like patrons just roll with it. Like the patrons who are here for the sale and the patrons who aren't here not realizing what's going on, but just sort of like, okay, like this is how Friday's gonna be. And I, I, I felt like it was pretty straight.
You know, that Saturday was the disability pride rally as well. I think there was a Pirates in the Park event. So when you're talking about patrons who were and were not expecting a book sale, there were also patrons expecting and not expecting pirates or a parade or tables set up and it still just worked. Always expect pirates. It all just worked out really well. You know, everybody just kind of looked around and like, oh, there's, there's extra things to, to do, enjoy whatever today. So.
We had a couple of, I think two, but maybe just one really endearing. She like followed up afterwards saying, I didn't realize that, hey, like maybe they waited up the last day and they saw people like bagging books and things like that. They're like, how do I, how do I make it right? I took a book and I think I. I feel like that's, that's actually the whole part for something.
I have one last question. What happened to those piles and piles of Cali sidebooks that I saw in the very last hour in the, in the veterans room? And all the other ones that didn't?
So, World, what is the organization called? Better World Books? Yes, Better World Books. So, yes, all, all the books get donated that aren't sold.
Find a home, if somebody's looking for them.
Um, that is it?
Um, oh, Parks, do we have an update?
I do not. So skip right to it.
Collaboration for early childhood, but then I think, no?
What were you gonna say?
I was gonna say, I thought there were, there were other early childhood things.
I can share with you what I, I shared with you. The copy is just, um, they have a regular meeting with like the IGA, so like people funding, the, the bodies that are funding them. But actually they've had discussions because I met with someone from the school board. They'd really like for Parks and the library to be involved in that because why not? And so they were looking at us because I guess we're listed as like interested parties, I think, in the IGA or something like that. And so they're actually trying to make it so that we are invited in this. So, uh, intergovernmental agreement?
No, no, okay.
Yeah, it's because like the village and the school districts fund the collaboration for early childhood. And like we don't, it was not a part of our taxes. Or the parks, but like we still collaborate with them and so, so do the parks. And so we've kind of had this ongoing thing of just like, and I know, like I think our staff participate in the monthly collaboration meetings, but then there's also this one. but then there's also this one. So I just, I know like, this has been a question for me of like, how do we choose which committees we sit on that are kind of more open and external? Um, and like we, I, I wasn't here when we decided on Planet Green, but like I kind of liken it to that where like if you're seeing the world through a sustainability lens, like you go to Planet Green, I see the world through an early childhood lens, like I'd love to have a, like a voice at that table. So somehow we're gonna get there.
That's all. So then it would be a separate, we don't need to add an additional report, but we would.
I'll keep you posted on how. I think I'm waiting to hear from them, either from the village or the schools.
But we would get different information from the current, um, collaboration from early, for early childhood, what we, that the staff is going to versus.
Maybe, yeah, possibly. I mean, like, regular meetings are probably more programmatic, so it's probably okay to actually be more a part of the IGA ones. Um, but yeah, I, I guess I'm curious to know what the differences are and what makes us and what we're invited to.
Okay. Um, if we do not send somebody from the board to the meetings for collaboration for early childhood and instead pivot to having somebody at that related IGA, would we be able to get staff reports the same way we're getting the Planet Green reports from that?
Well, you start. I think that when, when we first sort of had a conversation about expanding orderly positions, I asked staff to, to send me back the ways that they're involved with one of these groups. I don't have access to, you know, right now, but I know that I got a robust response from childrens. I feel like it included something about, are you, are you hearing between news now? Um, I think there was a project listed. So, um, I would say the answer is yes. And the first step would be making sure we understand what they're already doing. So I can do that for everyone.
And then that'll free you up to decide which one, but know that this one is covered by staff.
It was just exciting to hear that they had already been talking about having us kind of join with along with parks. Um, I don't think that should.
Uh, I don't have anything else for additional reports. Unfinished business. I know we already covered this quite a bit. So sorry that we jumped ahead in the agenda, folks.
I was excited about parking too.
Because it was data. It was exciting.
It's always, I mean, I feel like, you know, I'm new in the position and it's really great to have reasons to dig into, to different areas. So I'm, I always open that.
If we pass free parking, do we get to collect $200? I don't know. We'll have to see if the friends have an extra copy of that. Was there anything else that we wanted to discuss related to the parking or parking rates? I feel like the overall consensus was, this is fantastic information. We now have some real hard facts to talk to the community. When we do find folks who have questions on what's going on, why it costs, what it costs. It, it feels like there, there's some opportunity to get additional information on folks staying less than two hours. But definitely those, we've got less than a thousand people this year so far above that $10 range. And it seems that that price is, is meant to be either comparable to what the village parking would be in the village lots or a deterrent from folks using us as long-term parking. But other than that, do we have?
I would just note that it, the data is compelling and $1 can still be a burden. So I think that thinking sort of through that lens is also important. But, you know, $20 is certainly more than $1, but, but that could, I mean, I, I gotta kind of not longer from somebody who said, I can't bring my children to storytime because by the time I park, I'm a little bit, got into the program, it's over an hour. So in that case, um, we would have to clear it up with great news. It's two hours. Um, but, which, which does sort of answer the question for that patron. But, um, I think that everybody who uses a parking lot would have a different response if we said, is this system working? We, it's not the easiest export software to work with. But if the board decides that we want to do a deeper dive, I, we could sort of manually do some overlays in terms of, does this align with programs? Does it align, are there, what are the people hours? I think that we, I am very curious about study room use and parking use. That would be, it would be an estimate at best. You know, we could gather the data that we have, but it would, we'd be making some assumptions unless we were to have staff like going individually and saying to somebody, hey, so you're using a study room, are you also parking? We, you know, I'm not saying we're gonna do that right now, but I think that we could, we could explore this more deeply if we needed to. Another thing to keep in mind is that both branch locations have street parking that is, you don't have to pay for. That doesn't solve the issue and, but I think it's, it's good to keep in your mind when you're keeping a question. Um, the experience of the grant is, is different. Some people prefer one to the other. Um.
Or a program.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, um, it's, it's a puzzle for sure. Um, there was recently a conversation in the Urban Library Council Director Group about parking where mostly everybody sort of shared their parking rates and things like that. And, um, it's always, it always feels good to me to see that these are, these are things that lots of libraries are thinking about and trying to balance that equity, uh, equity in different ways. So, you know, it was, it was, it was fun to put it together. If we do want to do more data collection around it, through the sooner we know what points would be relevant to the conversation, the better. Because this is where, is relatively easy to pull. But as soon as we start trying to do overlays, we may be starting from zero. So to have enough to talk about, we'd want to start that, you know, well before we go back in.
Is the data difficulty in overlapping from different sources or is it? Never mind, let me just ask the question I'm gonna ask. If, if we were to look at, okay, three hours is the cutoff instead of two hours, do we have the ability to look at this data and figure out how many folks in that $1 pile would have been in the two to three hour range? Or does it not give us that kind of granularity?
I believe it would look like granularity because I think it gives us the exact, well, you know, does it? I feel like it gives us the exact time of entry and exit, which we could, we, we could get, we could figure that out. I don't know if we can tell the integrated software that we want to sort that way. I think it would be a manual sort after expo, which isn't a big deal. So I think, I think we could do that much. I mean, we could give a full spread of when a ticket was initiated and when it was closed.
I feel like for this, like, what I would love to know is, like, what is the issue? I understand that we're talking about an issue of equity, but like, is there, is there a capacity problem? And if there is, then like when we do the facility study, I think it should be addressed then where we're, okay, but it's over capacity. You know, I see, I, I don't know anything about code or anything, but seems like maybe there could be more spaces in there, whatever it be. Um, and then we have sort of an idea, okay, like if, if we're having a problem with certain events, it, at least for me, it sounds like if we're talking about, it sounds like there's some push here to reduce the prices. But like these, these, um, folks that are taking up, you know, for a dollar or $5, how much are they having an impact on the overall, um, uh, capacity of that? Like if, if somebody's just sitting there for 12 hours and other, most people are at the library for 90 minutes going in and out.
You know, my, my three-hour question was an example, meaning like, can we break it down?
Oh, I see.
More than just by, this person paid $5, so we know they stayed between three and four hours. Like, can we figure out who stayed three and a half hours? And do we see that like, I don't know, 90% of the people paying a dollar are here for two hours and 15 minutes?
Oh, got it, yeah.
Like, are, are there more granular lines in there that show, you know, people are leaving only because of, you know, they want to leave while it's free and do they stay longer? Um, so it wasn't specifically for like, I want to know about the two hour to three hour range. But just, it, because it, because it, it sounds like the hard part is going to be marrying, um, what is happening in the building and who's here with the parking data. But as long as we're working with just the parking data, there might be some more that we can pull out that's a little bit easier than trying to overlay like programs and storytime and other events and whatever else.
I'm thinking that when it comes to like registering for events at the library and meeting rooms or study rooms, it seems like it would be really easy to add in a question in the registration process that just asks us about anticipated parking use. It's not like you're signing up for parking right now, but you just, it's a data point. It would, it's easy, you know, it's just a question. I do expect to need to park here. I mean, I'm not sure whether the question would be, I would want to think about it, but I'm just thinking that that could be an easy and unintrusive data collection.
I don't know enough about the software we use for meeting and asking to know if it's easy or not. But I agree with you that that would be, it would be logical to put those pieces together. And I would advocate if we do that, that we actually include explicit language about why you're asking and, and what will happen with the data.
Like a little flow that says, why are we asking?
Yeah, because it, it feels like, I think that in our community and many communities, um, there are lots of concerns about surveillance of connecting your name and your vehicle, you know, all those pieces that, um.
Yeah, I share this with them. It would be possible. We have a software that's built for library programs and study rooms. So it's not just like an.
Oh, it's not ours?
Oh, no, no. This is a product that we use. It serves all lib, a lot of libraries, not.
And we have to beat the market basically.
Yeah, so I don't think there's a customization to just add in, um, a question that wouldn't be something related to programming.
Well, like when I register for children's events, for example, it asks like where I'm coming from, how I heard about the library. There's no, there's no, there's not being told why that's being asked. I assume it's because you want to track more or less where people are coming from in the events. Um, that's connected to my name and where I'm from. So, yeah, I, I think some of them are even more intrusive than sort of whether you're parking or not. Certainly not how the car you have, just wish that I was parking, but so there are things.
Another, I mean, we also could have a person standing with the interest of the parent, you know, saying, if you don't mind, take care of your program, you know? Which is also, people might find it intrusive or not. Um, but it, collecting that information when the vehicle hurts might be a little bit more accurate than what, because I don't know, if I was checking that, it'd be like.
Yeah, I would give it all day, yeah.
But I, I don't know, I'm more beside it, it's raining, they may be able to. So, yeah, if we get to the point where we, to the diagram, I think we have a couple of different tools we could use. And, and we could explore.
Is it something that might be easier if we say, we'll start keeping track of it now rather than trying to work retroactively with it?
I think if we're comfortable, we want the data. It's easier to start now. If, if we're gonna allocate staff resources and ask the community for something different and we're not sure, I'm chill.
And what we can do about it? I mean, I guess that's, I think that, if we're gonna allocate staff time to it, we have to have it. If we conclude this, that will try to.
And I don't think we're there yet. I think right now we're just trying to figure out if there's, if there's an anything there.
I think that's my concern with this. Um, like, to me, there's just so much to do, like so many priorities that we have that this isn't one of them. I, I think like, we, we came to this because we actually had a good problem that we had more revenue than we expected. And then we had a couple anecdotes saying parking's hard, which like, you're always going to get those anecdotes, parking is hard. Um, I don't want to make parking too easy either. So it's like a really delicate dance and I don't, I, I think at this time, I'm not that curious about it, but I'm okay with keeping it on like as something we're tracking, but I, yeah. Um, in terms of like priorities in a fascist state, this isn't it for me. I don't know.
Well, and also, but, yeah, to Megan's point, like, what are we going to do about it? Because we're still stuck in that problem of that people can park here for the village. Like it, it's this particular challenge of where we're located. You know, the fact that I heard this anecdote when somebody didn't know that I was a library board trustee. You know, they were just frustrated with the machine and trying to pay and she was flustered and upset that she had her kid there. And she was just talking to me as a fellow person there, you know? It was why I took it as something to, to kind of report to y'all.
Well, and I mean, and the surplus is, like, we've commented on that a couple of times, being like, oh, we should look at, oh, we should look at that, you know? And also, I mean, there have been times when I come, like when I was looking for a job in Holstein and I was coming here and using the study room. And it's, it takes a while, you know, and you're like, whoa, okay, I'm gonna try parking on this weekend's time, you know, and so.
But I also think, Elmer, to explain that it's a surplus because it's a conservative number to begin with. So I mean, we're looking at a low, like a deep limit number to begin with.
I think now that we have some actual information, because that was, Susan, that's where you were coming from, is, oh, maybe, maybe this is a problem. I think now we're seeing, it's some, it's something to look at, it's something to watch, it's something we.
It could still be a problem, but we don't really have an avenue of our, of, of how to fix it, given where we're located. Like, that's the, that's where, that's the dead end.
No, we're never gonna get rid of the public parking, just people who reside with their public parking.
That's the dead end I'm seeing, which is unfortunate.
I would love it if we could offer two hours free, um, blocks around the library with a library card at the pasters.
Oh, yeah, that would be kind of cool.
Yeah.
That's bad, that's good.
Talk about IGA.
It's not uncommon with urban libraries, but not all parking systems even, it's not even like a possibility or something. So, I mean, I've, I've seen it from systems before. I think.
That's cool.
That could be so. So then we would have to talk to the village to get the, and then it'd be an IGA, I imagine?
And then most likely we would refund. So it would be, uh, we would pay.
So this, this, this surplus will go there. But also then we're getting back to the.
Well, we'll go back, we'll go back.
Coming from the library.
Yeah, we go back to the village.
But then we're back at that surveillance question. If you have to use your library card, that means that parking space is now tied to your name. Are you comfortable with that?
You have the app that's already tied to your name and your, your license plate. I missed that because that's.
Can you still?
Can you make use for us, eh?
I feel like it doesn't matter. When we do, we.
Like, who are you?
When we do a facilities plan, though, we're actually, we'll be part of it, right? So like when that comes up, I feel like then we'll know if we're, we need more capacity or not. And then that's when you address how much it costs, right? It's a supply and demand thing. It's a finite amount of space. And to me personally, it, it's about getting people in and out of the library and being able to be here, right? So it's like if we're, we talked about it so much.
Yeah.
Whenever it comes up again in the future and we have.
Future, future, don't, don't put staff into it.
Can you remind us, why was the facility study planned?
Um, that this, uh, this is gonna be part of the budget discussion.
Okay, okay.
And so.
Sneaky ambush.
This level of information is, is easy to pull. So if we want, yes, we know we can do comparisons, um, over time. And if we get to a point where we want more, let's just talk about it and we can, we can put it together.
Can I just preemptively ask for this, the January meeting to cover all 2025, so we have a full year of data?
Sure, sure. So the, the same report, just with the year of data. So that, we probably would have to wait, we would be talking about it several years.
All right. Any other discussion on parking? All right, new business, discussion item, draft number one of the fiscal year 2026 budget.
The main event.
Thank you, thank you. I'm so excited to be back at this table to present, um, draft one of the 2026 budget. Uh, and happy to say that, uh, you know, we, we balanced the budget the first time and like in the flat last year.
Congratulations.
And we maintained that balance this year.
Congratulations.
Well, we'll talk about how we maintain that as we get through this. But before, um, I, we dive into the, the, um, into the documents, I want to talk. um, I, we dive into the, the, um, into the documents, I want to talk a little bit about the process, because I know we have, um, newer trustees, new trustees that have not been through this process before, so just, um, I want to start off with, there's some good news, there's some good news here. A third of the work, over three of the work has already been completed. You're good, you're jumping in like a third of the way in, um, so staff, library staff, the leadership team, Ellsworth, um, the management team, other staff members have been working on this, uh, through June, July, and getting ready for this meeting here. Um, so you're seeing the first draft of the budget, so, uh, we'll review, um, uh, review the draft, and we will, I want to focus on the revenue section, the people's section, and the capital expenses section, those are some of the largest sections of our, of our budget. Um, but I'm happy to answer questions about any 80-plus line of budget that you see in front of you. Um, uh, but what I'm looking for tonight, too, is, um, some direction, because we're gonna have to take this feedback, Ellsworth and the leadership team, we're gonna take this feedback and bring it, draft two of the budget to you next month, and we've already heard that the next month's meeting is moved up to September 16th. That feels like I'm gonna blink and it's gonna be here, um, so we're looking for some feedbacks, we're gonna get draft two of the budget to you, uh, in September, and in September, we'll be looking for additional feedback, if there's any additional changes that are required, they'll incorporate those into the October draft, draft three. The October meeting is typically where we want to see, um, the approval of the budget and the, and the levy resolution. So, yeah, October's gonna be, gonna be here before we know it, but we'll see another draft in September and final draft hopefully in October. Uh, we're usually about a month ahead of the village in their review of the, um, of their budget, because the, the village, we need to incorporate whatever you decide is the levy for the library, whatever, whatever that resolution is, we have to pass along to the, to the village to incorporate in their levy, because they levy our taxes on our behalf, the library's taxes on our behalf. So I'll talk a little bit about the process, any questions about, about that? Okay. And as I mentioned earlier, we maintained that balance, uh, where we established last year, we overcame a, a nearly $380,000 operating deficit and balanced the budget. So our goal, we knew our goal when we entered this, into the 2026 budget season is maintaining that balance. We worked so hard, um, to get to a balanced budget, and then we, we've been talking with staff and talking internally about also how hard it is to maintain that balance, because any bump in the road can throw you one way or the other, you know, you have, didn't quite make your revenue here, like, oh, well, we have this increased expense over here, you can throw that out of balance. But balance isn't the, balance is a key piece of this, but balance isn't the only thing. We want to make sure this budget document still reflects our values and our strategic direction, um, and, you know, that we're able to justify any, any property tax increases to our, to our community. Okay.
Wow, I, I just want to recognize that we can work into page, uh, sixty through sixty-three, where you, uh, create a narrative around each of these points. I think that is helpful for, for the people at this table to understand the budget and the system thinking behind it, but also for staff and the general public. This is not every, um, not every taxing body puts this kind of stuff together, and I'm really pleased that this is how we're sharing it, because I, I think it takes some of the mystery out of, of the budget.
And I thought it was important, the, the library, actually, this isn't, this isn't a brand new idea for the library. Years ago, we used to do this, uh, but now that we have a lot of new trustees and for all sorts of security transparency, I'm willing to say any of these things, but, you know, if I, um, I also talk fast, and so if you want, if you're, if you process things through reading, it's, it's there for you as well, uh, or you can refer back to it. And, yeah, the community can, you can look at it as well. Um, I did go ahead and define all the lines of revenue, um, I did not do that for all the lines of expenses, there's over 80 lines of expenses. Um, but, yeah, I thought we'd talk about revenue first, and if you haven't heard yet, the library is, um, nearly 96% funded by property taxes. Um, the next largest revenue line behind property taxes is the interest that we, that we earn on our cash holdings, so just in that, um, you know, in the $200,000 range. So just property taxes is what, is what fun, the, the community funds this library through its property taxes. Um, I'm happy to walk through all the different lines, but also I know that we were, I did, we did do that at the finance committee meeting, you know, Colin and Ellsworth and I met, we did discuss the, the budget document at length. Um, I think, yeah, are there any questions about the revenue section that I can answer more, more Colin and Ellsworth can jump into?
Thing, thing you pointed out, um, and I may have gotten this wrong, that Friends, was it always a, a zero dollar, and now it's like a firm, it's $25,000 that's actually being included as, as a continuous number?
So, man, I, going back at least a few years, we, we budgeted for, um, Friends money to come in, there might have been a time where we budgeted zero, um, but what, what that point was is, um, so the Friends in 2025 are giving, um, giving us about $20,000, and they've committed to at least $25,000 in 2026, which I think comes on the heels of that successful, um, successful book fair. Um, but we didn't always budget for the expenses, there's a little, like, this, you know, um, a lot of what the Friends support is a lot of, um, public services and program, programming, and the staff are doing that work, but we weren't always budgeting for it, and so it was showing up on the revenue side, but it wasn't showing up on the expense side, but we were doing the work. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, it was showing up in the expense side, but not in, like, not in the, like, adult programming or children's programming, like, where, where it was actually happening, it was showing up in a different line. It's a confusing accounting piece, um, but, Suzie, no, Suzie, it's confusing, but it's important that both of those pieces, the revenue and the expenses, are both accounted for in this, in this budget. Um, but, yeah, I think the good news here is that 20, we can, I mean, that's a 25% increase in the Friends funding this year, so that's, that's a good one.
We typically make that ask, a formal ask at, at the end of the year, I shrink it in, so our line is, well, our own financial calendar, um, before it was happening in May and there was some business, so we'll make that ask around November, December, and then they'll vote on that and give us the money in June.
Oh, great. We've talked a lot tonight about parking lot revenue, um, at the risk of bringing that, um, I, I just wanted to call your attention to the, to the, what I, um, uh, it's on page sixty-one, at the, the third point down. Um, we are projecting, we are going to, maybe based on, based on this year's, uh, performance, and I don't, just say that it's a surplus, I mean, I think that we're, we're taking, we are bringing in more money than what we had budgeted or projected, but we budgeted for, like, like, we, we lowballed that on purpose, because there had been so many months where the gates or the, or the system was not operational, but our facilities team, our I T team have fixed that, and so you're now, you're seeing fully operational, so we're seeing that revenue, um, uh, increase. The, because when it's not, when that's not working, the gates are up and it's just free parking for everyone, and then when the word gets out, there's no parking for anyone, because.
Yes.
Um, but, but I just wanted to say also that we've, um, uh, we have essentially, now, we're now in 2026, we're budgeting about the same amount of revenue as we did in 2019, which was a pre-pandemic year. We were charging the same rates in 2019 as we are today, um, and we're gonna be budgeting for about the same amount of revenue, so I think that's a, that's a fair number, I think we'll get there.
Do you want to talk about the 4%?
Oh, yeah, perhaps that's like the punchline that I should, that I should have started with.
I assumed you were, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, the, in, in order for us to, to, you know, once we looked at all of our expenses and, you know, knowing that the property taxes, uh, fund, you know, nearly all of, all of our, make up all of our revenue, we would require, uh, with this current draft of the budget, a 4% increase in property taxes, a 4% increase in property taxes. Um, you know, when we started out with this exercise, when we were talking about maintaining balance with staff, and we were presenting this to, to all staff at our chats, we started with a number that was 3%, and, and I think, Ellsworth, you've talked about this, how you were very hopeful that we could stick to that 3%, and once we started talking to staff and, um, and getting some of the numbers in, 4% was, sorry, 3% was not, in order to maintain our values and maintain our strategic direction, um, 3% wasn't gonna cut it, and so that's what, we went up to 4% there.
That was, that was a, a labored conversation, and ongoing lapse of energy going into that. Um, when Billy mentioned my aspiration for 3%, I, I feel like this is my flipster here as a director, we have over half the new board, it would have felt really good to come forward with a 3% increase, but it would require actual reductions in what we're doing. Um, and I remember as part of the hearing process, that was a question that was asked, was sort of like, what's your approach to, to increase access to the library, and I think it's a, it's more of a disservice to hold the line, because you feel like it's important to hold the line, because you need that to, to increase, so you're gonna, we could, we could do a year of 3%, we got to reduce some things, but then the next year we face to a, a 6% or an 8%, I think the, the best approach is to say, this is what we need, and in this budget, I'm not gonna do that conservative, but we're not asking for, for new shiny, um, programs and services, but I also don't think this is the right time to reduce, um, to stick to that 3%, so, um, I honestly, I feel like 4% is, um, we're making some, some sort of surgical decisions in the budget as far as, as where do those dollars go, um, but I, I think it's important to acknowledge that, that that was a very careful, ongoing process, and it's one that every taxing body has had, and we know that this is a shared experience, um, balancing needs and surgery.
And I think you mentioned that we're kind of in line with the other taxing bodies so far.
Yeah, so Lynda Barnett, our manager of accounting and finance, um, has a relationship with a number of the taxing bodies, uh, and their finance teams, and, uh, what we're hearing is, uh, no one's able to do 3%, um, so I shouldn't say that. What, what she's hearing from who she's talking to, it's, um, you know, sticking to 3%, it's actually gonna be closer to 4% or over 4% in some cases. I did happen to see, um, D97's presentation, and they were at 2.9%, they, um, for property taxes, but they also saw some, um, other, other, they have other revenue sources, they saw some increase revenue other, other places, like, we're doing 2.9%, but township, village, um, park district, um, all over 3%, and some of them are likely closer to 4, or above. So for context.
The villages.
Village, holding to 3% is gonna be a really hard thing for the village to do. I don't want to talk, I don't want to share their business, but, but, I mean, that's what we're hearing, is that keeping to 3% is gonna be really hard for them to do.
I don't want to jump into expenses quite yet.
Why not?
As I, as I jump into expenses.
That's the next, that's the next thing, yeah, yeah. I mean, there's nothing else about revenue.
Well, I, you're mentioning this 4%, and I'm, and one of the first things you said was, if we want to stay in line with our strategic vision and our values, and I know one of the things that you specifically, um, the board and the staff have kept an eye on is making sure that we keep our wages and the benefits and the things that we offer our staff here, not just in line with the bare necessity of what, you know, the state of Illinois requires, but that we provide our staff with a living that allows them to, to live and flourish, and, and when I'm looking at health benefits and I'm looking at retirement funds, that seems to be, maintaining those seems to be a huge part of why we're pulling further away from this 3% than we would have wanted to. It's not that we would be, you know, giving out grandiose raises, it would be just maintaining things like access to healthcare for, for folks and keeping wages where they are, it's gonna be nearly 6%.
Um, which, which, um, section, I don't know, the overall people section.
People, yeah, people compensation.
Yeah, um, yes, overall, that's, that would be about a, yeah, about 5.9%, 6% increase, but, yeah, and, but that doesn't mean, I mean, you're, yes, Virginia, you're correct, I think one thing I would, um, uh, just clarify is, um, um, I would love to have infinite amounts of, of, of money available to pay staff truly what they, what each individual is worth. Um, we, um, we do, do have a compensation philosophy to try and match the public library market for Illinois, and so, and we are, and we are, and what's required this year is an average of 2.8% pay increases for staff, and so I'm, like, even with the 4%, 4% property tax increase, it's not like we're lavish spending and getting all these large pay increases, I mean, the average is 2.8%. Um, what that does, though, it does allow us to maintain our health benefits at not making drastic changes. We do, we do, um, we did get a, like, a 9% initial renewal for our, a 9% increase, initial renewal for our medical insurance, um, and the Chicago Landmark, it's been seeing, you know, closer to 20% for the first, for the first number, um, but then we threw some plan design changes, and we were able to bring that down to 6%, and those plan design changes were made, um, in ways that are not going to, uh, not going to dramatically impact staff. However, if you need that to go down even, if you want that to go lower, you're talking about starting to impact staff's, staff's healthcare benefits.
So what kind of plan design changes don't impact?
Um, this is, this is a, um, I, I'm gonna attempt to explain it. Um, we had an opportunity to go from a PPO, we have a PPO plan now, uh, and an HMO, that's what we have, PPO and an HMO, HMO plan. We have an opportunity to change our PPO plan design to what's called a BCO, Low Choice Options, where, um, instead of every facility, every doctor falling into the PPO network, there's actually two tiers of PPO network coverage, uh, in the BCO, the Low Choice Options, and, um, but even with those that create those two tiers, over 92% of our claim experience was falling in like the, um, uh, let's just say tier one, which would actually end up generating lower deductibles and lower out-of-pocket costs for our staff, and then if they went to the tier two coverage, it'd be the same as the coverage is now. And because we made that change, we do those tiered coverage, we're actually seeing a 2.5% reduction in, um, 2.5% reduction in, um, medical costs, so.
And the increase.
In the increase, sorry, a 2.5% reduction in the increase, so going from 9% to, um, what was that, um, 6.5%?
And I was, I mean, going to contest, I was very skeptical, which was not going to have a negative impact on staff. And insurance is, is one of the things that I feel most trauma about, is depending on the benefit, and, um, but as he walked me through it and showed the, like he just said, the percentage of claims already that would fall into the higher tier coverage, and knowing that there's, the lesser of two tiers is equal to what we have.
Our current plan design.
I, I, I still don't really understand the backend of why that seems to be a transfer of money, but it does, I understand the, the small impact on staff.
The, the, not the lesser of the two tiers, but the, the, but.
I think it's hard to explain without, without the numbers that you just turned on you, but we, we did, by doing this change, um, staff will end up, uh, the same coverage or better. Um, the, where, where more cost can happen is without network coverage, those, that plan design did change, but, um, there are like a handful of, of low, low cost out of network things that happen, and they're like, the, the network gave access to is the widest network that Blue Coast Michelle offers, and so it's really, like, very few things while out of network. Um, but I think it's, because Michelle thinks it's gonna drive more people to their, um, preferred providers, is what, is what I think, think they're banking on. I don't know what, what their extraterrestrials are basing this on, but, um, I, but what I'm saying, we were able to do that, but if we want to bring down medical insurance costs more, it will start impacting, like, staff will see the impact, they'll see that their deductibles are increasing, they will see that their, um, out-of-pocket maximals are increasing, or their co-pays are increasing. Um, we're able to keep the, uh, plan design the same or better, depending on what tier you're in.
So, you said it was like 92% or something, fell within the, that tier one, the 8% that falls into the tier two, is that what cuts, I'm trying to figure it out, then, then like, staff of a particular age or staff with a particular, you know?
No, it's providers, providers. No, it's providers, providers, it's, it's all about which provider you go to.
But, I'm like, and I'm not asking for the data because that would be intrusive, I don't want, I'm, I'm just trying to, um, understand, does that mean that like someone who has a cancer diagnosis, they need to go to outside of a particular network? And so that's not showing up as a large percentage, whereas like the other staff or staff that don't have cancer, like, that makes up the ninety-two percent? I'm just trying to, to check in on the data and.
So I don't, I don't have acce, I don't have access to that information, I have access to which providers staff accessed, I don't have, um.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what I'm saying, I'm not necessarily asking that, I'm just bringing up the question.
But, but regardless, and I saw this data, and regardless, the point that I'm trying to make is that the tier, tier two coverage, let's say for the eight percent of certain, eight percent of, um, providers that our staff visit in a year that aren't in that tier one or tier two, that layer, that coverage, um, is structured the exact same plan as, as our plan now.
Okay, gotcha.
As in twenty twenty-five. So we worked really hard to get to that, to get to that number.
I feel like I asked the exact question.
Yeah, I've, I've answered this before.
I really had to be, I really had to be walked through it to, I don't know, to believe, but to understand that that second tier was equal to our current.
Yeah, and, and so far, the staff I've talked to about this, um, I'm actually excited to talk to them about this applicant enrollment. However, we haven't made a final decision yet because we don't know if we need to bring down, if we need to bring down costs more, we might have to change that plan design even more.
And again, we give really great health insurance for full-time employees and non-part-time employees, right?
Correct, if you'd like to cover part-time employees, we need about a million more dollars. Or, or a federal government to start taking a little tab.
Yeah. So how does this bode for the future? Because it seems like a great solution, possible solution for this year, for next year.
For, um, the medical plan design? Yeah, that's a great question. So we are in the, um, IPBC, the Illinois Personnel Benefit Cooperative, we belong to a, a co-op of government agencies that band together to purchase their, um, uh, insurance together. So the IPBC, you can check out, check out the website. And what, historically, one of the great benefits of being part of the IPBC is we have very slow and steady increases to our, to our medical insurance rates. Uh, actually, all, all of our insurance rates. But this year is kind of like an anomaly, it kind of stands out, uh, there's a correction happening in the market, uh, mainly due to the co, the rising costs of healthcare, but, uh, mainly the GLP-one drugs. And so, um, uh, so there's, so when you, the Chicago land market's seeing a twenty percent average increase for renewals, uh, and the IPBC is able to get me, get our library a nine percent starting point. It's weird that we'd say nine percent is a good starting point. But what, and I say all that because I feel like we're well positioned with the IPBC to control those increases in the years to come, it's a self-funded model. But yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the exact answer to that question.
Thank you, that, that was actually very helpful. I have another question about, but I don't wanna move beyond to the, this discussion, there's still questions to discuss about it. Okay. Can you tell us more about the Illinois Pro-Capita grant?
Oh, revenue.
Is zeroed out, yeah.
Yeah, so historically, we have not budgeted for the Illinois Pro-Capita grant. Now, the Illinois Pro-Capita grant is essentially, it's a grant that we receive, or eligible to receive each year. The amount per person or per, per community member changes, does, does fluctuate. Uh, this last year was one point, one dollar and forty-seven cents per person. The, depending on the state of Illinois' timing of distributing these funds, sometimes we receive it in the, um, fiscal year that it's been budgeted for, and sometimes we don't. And so, so historically, we had budgeted as zero, however, we did use this tool, um, last year only to budget, we budgeted eighteen thousand dollars. We budgeted eighteen thousand dollars, uh, for twenty twenty-five to balance the budget, I mean, it was just, we just, like, like, our budget was out of balance, and we're, we wanted to maintain that balance, we're like, okay, fine, we'll take eighteen thousand from this line. We knew that we wanna go back to a, back to a system where we don't have to rely on that. And so when we do, when we do receive those funds, it can perhaps offset where we may have missed revenue in other places. So again, if the parking garage gates were open for two months, there's some, there's some.
So does that mean that some fiscal years you received it twice?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, yeah, generally, Illinois pays its bills, generally speaking, just, do they pay them on time?
Gotcha.
So, um, it takes a bit. It's one of those things that allows us a little bit of buffer, you know, in our revenue. And again, with, with Pritzker as governor, we've been consistently, yes, we're very, more consistent. However, that can change, you know, and so how much do we want to rely on that is the, um, kind of question. I would say, um, oh, sorry, so.
Well, for expenses, I was just wondering about like, um, the programming, like, there are some lines, like, showing kind of by department, and I think those adult services that jumped up a bit?
Yeah, so the programming lines in general, I mean, jumping up, all, all total programming jumping up eighteen point seven percent. A lot of that is because we are now. Cause we're now correctly accounting for friends' spending, so, like, this adult service, adult program line is a perfect example of this. So the, um, when you include all the work, all the programming they do for the friends, that line goes from, you know, being in like the low to mid twenties to, oh, being, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars. Because they're doing the friends' folk concerts, the friends', um, nothing about the friends' programming, but that, that's giving example. And that's just, and we're, and instead of, instead of, um, uh, putting it in like a miscellaneous expense line, we're actually putting it where it's where, who's doing the work and who's, who's, because it's all adult, adult services staff that are doing this work, uh, and spending the funds.
That makes, that makes sense, thank you. And then like for the, I guess similarly, what is the patron services programming?
That is a new line this year, and I'm happy to have Susie back, who might want to explain that.
Um, we added that this year because our patron services team does do programming, and it came out to like, well, whose pot does this come out of? And so we needed to get them their own, um, pot to, they can spend money out of, kind of their own line. Um, I will say, I'm trying to pull up the document that I wrote before, I wanna, I'm trying to believe, I do leave all our programming lines or leave their flat down. So, um, there wasn't an increase in our programming budget. Um, it just looks that way because we're kind of incorporating the friends' money to that.
Yeah, the patron.
So the folk concerts are a great example of.
Oh, not for friends, but were you talking about patron services, patron services?
Uh, patron services programming. So they do, um, they do a lot of programming at the branches, um, and I don't have a ton of things off the top of my head.
The Shakespeare, um.
The Shakespeare Fest, um.
The Death Cafe, or the Death.
They're doing like, uh, yeah, Death Cafe, some older adults programming, so, um.
And then, so, we don't have a community engagement department anymore, correct? So like, that line item is speaking to like book bike and like certain program staff?
Uh, so the community engagement line, we do sell the manager of community engagement, who's about in the, uh, currently in community communications, and that is a line that's dedicated to, um, to the, that, that program related to that position.
Gotcha.
And in the coming year, we're, we're talking through levels of how community engagement, uh, will intersect with the director, the creative resources. There may be some, some functional changes there, but we felt strongly that, that we need to maintain the, the budget line.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I think that's an example, when you talk about like why, why four percent property taxes increases needed, and if you wanted to go to three, these are areas where you start looking at, like, where can you start trimming off of, but you're just trimming different places and, and, um, but all of the programming line total, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. What's the difference between a four percent property tax increase and a three percent property tax increase? It's about one hundred fourteen thousand dollars. And so I don't think you're gonna get there with, you're not gonna get to the program alone, you're gonna have to start looking at, you know, people, as people, is where you are.
I was gonna ask for the, for the next version of the budget, I don't think I'm seeing it. If I'm not seeing it, calm down. If near each of the totals, like total program, if we could have a percentage of the total budget, so that we can kind of think about that, because you're right, that, that four percent is like, almost all the programs.
Yeah, like, like I, like the people section, I know seventy-five percent of the budget.
Yeah.
Public services is, you know, a fraction of a percent.
Yeah, I, it would be helpful to my brain if somewhere there was a percentage that told, like, all of these eight lines really only accounts for seven percent of the budget. So that we have a, a clearer picture of, you know, if we are going to make deductions here, are we actually going to move the needle?
Yeah, we, we, um, I was just thinking about that point, we have, um, on our, um, library website, we have a budget page, and it, and it shows a breakdown of like where, where the money goes.
Yeah.
And so I wonder if just including that as a reference point, cause it wouldn't, it wouldn't, um, it wouldn't shift wildly from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six.
That would be sufficient for me, if that's okay with, for everybody else.
Okay. No, no, there was gonna be more, what is it, we're thinking of the four percent, but that's what we're talking about. Just, uh, start to gauge, uh, what people's mindsets are about that, um, but.
I have another question about revenue. If I can go through it, please. Now I lost it, I'll have to get my page again. Can you tell us more about the community fund endowments and how you were, um, anticipating that shift? And do you, like, how much information do you have about those investments?
So, I know.
Under control.
Yeah, I, um, actually don't have a lot of control, they, they essentially tell us what the dispersment will be. I mean, Ellsworth, I don't think I've, if you've had a chance to meet anything from the community fund.
I think that's something that has gotten in the subject.
And, yeah, they essentially tell us what the dispersments will be, it's a, it's a certain percentage of the fund, and they, they do that calculation. And I, I actually don't know how much control we have, so, the funds are all set up differently, they have different agreements and different, um, they're all set up differently, depending on who, who and when, how it was started. And some of them, I think we do have more control, and some we don't. Some are a set percentage and some are recommended percentage, so, but I don't, um, this is based on what they, what they've told us. They're gonna just, if, we can look into that, if we want to, perhaps have more distributed or less, but something I'm gonna look into.
Thank you.
Your question about what is done with the money while it's in holding, or about the dispersal?
It was actually about both, but I, I mean, I am curious about that, it's also.
That isn't a good reminder to connect with them, so.
That'd be great, yeah.
I think it's important to point out, right, that it's also, it's the, uh, the budget, it's a full year budget for the director, um, for equity and anti-racism. Yeah, yeah, one of the other levels that we had to pull, to overcome that three hundred eighty thousand dollar deficit, is not budgeted for a full year for the Director of Equity and Anti-Racism. However, um, if we're going to do that for, we, we're doing that in twenty twenty-six, just know that that's one of the reasons why there's like, beyond, it's not just pay increases that are in the wages, it's not one, it's budgeting.
Yeah, I actually had a question about that, Ellsworth kind of got to it a little bit earlier, but the budget is only for that one position now, right? So it's to hire a leader, but where is the programming and people under that, where's the budget? I mean, I don't wanna have us have a situation where we have a leader that has.
We have a budget.
There's a fourteen thousand dollar budget for program, I mean, for people, having a director with no employees underneath them is, I'm not turning in the operations of what you're doing, it's just, I think it's a question that needs to.
That's a great question. Do you have different structures throughout the departments of what the reporting, under directors and managers looks like? But we have funding for, it was the multicultural.
Multicultural librarian coordinator of library.
So the librarian level role with a complimentary scope to the anti-racism, I think, which is directed. You mentioned earlier, I also think that community, it will be, uh, an area that we'll talk about how to build relate. And so I, I could see at least two full-time positions aligning with the director that we need to do this. And if we make other changes to department structure, uh, that could shift around a little bit.
Okay, yeah. Funds as a plan.
But do, if we have a full year of funding for coordinator librarian level, like?
Correct, it's already, it was already included.
So we, we have, I think that the sort of order of operations will be to bring in the director position first. They could contribute to thinking about what the coordinator librarian position looks like.
Thank you. So the multicultural role is then a librarian role?
It's a librarian level.
Yeah.
I think the title would seem to librarian to coordinator to accommodate whether or not somebody had an MLS degree, so it's the same grade.
Either, either way, it's the same grade position and the same pay, pay, um, pay grade. But I, uh, we did, actually, the reason, we went back to the librarian title, uh, the person that we hired last had their MLS degree, when someone has their MLS degree in that role, we, we would, um, even though it's not required for the role, um, if someone has an MLS degree, we would give them that librarian title.
Gotcha.
So, but it is, it's, it's still grade four regardless.
I think there was conversation around, like, doing a, a hiring for that position, um, like a external hiring. Like, firm, yes, is that, or like a national search, are we doing that?
For the director level?
For the director level.
I think it would be a national, I think we would put it out on the national level.
Yeah, but maybe not like pay first.
But we did not budget money for firm, um, and Virginia and I are gonna get together and talk about the, the current vacancies.
Yeah. And so I believe I understood we were, cause when should we have that position live?
We have to, so I was like, we have to take a look at, because the original job description was written before COVID.
Right.
And also, we may want to look at changing the title so that it.
But like, who's we, I guess?
So I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a conversation about what, what leadership level positions are, are open right now, and what the, like, high-level decisions around what those look like, and I think much of that would be brought back to the board as a, as an information.
I think a lot.
And then after that, we will, we, so it becomes operational work, it'll be created, the posting language and, and those, um, you know, caucities, all that stuff. But I do, I think that we would publicize and market, especially the director level position differently, and we'll do some jobs, to make sure that we are not limiting ourselves just to the library environment, that we want to, to look, sort of, uh, different opportunities to drop candidates for that. We don't know exactly what it will look like yet, but I anticipate it being a high-interest position, um, and, and I, I would imagine we'll be.
So you're thinking, so you are thinking of doing a non-librarian position, so outside of the industry?
I think we, we have, yeah, let down, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not ready to say that I think a library would be required, but I do, I can't imagine asking for, um, library or adjacent experience.
Yeah.
I think we'll probably have a, sort of a, a menu of what that experience could be like, which is typically how we do hiring, especially at high levels. So I, I think that we, we just have some conversation to get through, and part of that is defining, is will the scope stay the same as the, what the position was for previously? Or do we want that to evolve differently?
And part of that was to go with the conversation that we had planned as a strategic meeting, but it didn't happen yet, so that is a little bit why.
Yeah.
It got kicked down the road a little bit, but we don't wanna.
That our strategic plan might impact the job description and then.
Like what we're gonna prioritize in that job description and, yeah.
So what's the timeline that you're just, I mean, obviously, you can't read the future, but what do you, can you say what you're thinking?
A strategic session is on the fourteenth. I mean, I think that will give, that will give Ellsworth a good, I think. I mean, I think that will give the, that will give Ellsworth a good idea of what our priorities as a board are for equity and anti racism. And then that will allow Ellsworth and I'm assuming Billy to look at comparable roles that are already in existence and help us to start putting together, like it's not gonna have to be from scratch necessarily, but the twenty twenty-five job description for this role is going to have to look much different from how we described this role previously.
But I guess like you're not anticipating this won't be filled this year or even.
You know, I would, I would, what I was thinking is, which is a politically savvy way of saying, I bet by November, we can have the posting kind of ready to go. But.
Proposed.
So I think I think it would be, I think it depends where somebody is coming from. It depends how long the entry process needs to be. And it also depends on what else comes up. I mean, if if something big, unexpected happens that could change your timeline. There is a complex history with this position, and I think that we will need to spend some intentional time communicating with staff, with our immediate community, sort of what changes were made and why, and what our thinking is behind this to make sure that we're setting up for success. So this is gonna look different than most of the positions that we would fill. And I think some of that, we won't know how long it will take until we're doing it. But I'm, I I think that we'll be able to to create something. One issue that you always face with like fall postings being ready is how will the open period and then the entry process be affected by client time off, library closures, things like that. But but we are, we all have experience in that and we will navigate that as we need to. I, so again, I, if if nothing unexpected comes up, I feel like we, the chances of having a posted ready by November, you know, is pretty good.
Right, I think I I think doing it slowly and being successful are more important than doing it quickly and having it fall, you know? And so I think that being strategic and careful and taking.
I'm yeah, I'm just so grateful it's like written down here and that we're talking about it. I mean, this position's been open for a long time and so it's to me very important we fill it and it's like we've got a plan and. Yeah.
And I think there'll be more communication around this position than most of our positions. I know that there's community interest. I know that there's staff interest. I think it's both functionally very important and also symbolically very important. This is something that we've used as a touch point and as in terms of we maintain these values, we maintain these strategic initiatives. This is a key part of that. So I'm, I I think that there's a readiness. We want to make sure that we talk about it at least those steps. But I I think that we're going to have a compelling position and take the time to to set up the organization to to really welcome and embrace the role as it comes out. And I also think we learned so much from the first iteration that we we already have so much more information to work with than on this first period. So we can we can learn from that. And during the the first iteration here and the interim period, wouldn't say that I've seen anything exactly like what we're imagining, but other systems have have developed jobs that are maybe more similar to this than we would have had as examples the first time around. So we can also, you know, reach out to those library administration teams and sort of say, tell us about your process, tell us about how it's going. And even the people who have known those roles and talk about it. So I think there'll be more, more background. We could do more learning in the future. I'm really excited of the future of that position. I think we can find the sweet spot of defining what it is and leaving room for more content to really have leadership.
I just wanna also echo what Christine said. This is like very, it's a high, huge priority in our community. There's a lot of harm in what's down there in this group here. It's sort of hinging on this position and I appreciate your thoughtfulness. I appreciate the priority you're placing. And just on that, for training, because there's, there are a couple of things that were promised every second of like twenty twenty. We have two, maybe. So almost two years ago, and one is that we hire anti racism, the re-director, and the other is training, anti racism training. And so I just wanna make sure that that's sufficiently budgeted for.
Yeah, I was wondering what, where are we on the R F P and that process?
Yeah, so Lee and I have been exploring options. We have money in this year's budget for some training where we'll do that, and we have money in next year's budget. So what I would like to see is that my inclination is to prefer the next year's budget to make sure we have somebody in that role who can contribute to how those dollars are spent for training. But for this year's budget, we are actively looking at options. I think our our first choice facilitator may may not fit with our budget. So we're we're gonna kind of take another look. Maybe more.
So is is the anti racism training budget for twenty twenty-six, is that the twelve? Twelve thousand dollars?
Where?
Money in equity and anti racism.
Where do you like it?
I don't know. I'm looking at page sixty-five, equity and anti racism.
Because I think page sixty-five, the equity and anti racism, is that?
So that, no, that would be an external process. But because the position is open, it is appropriate. I'd have no problem using that for training resources. I think that's appropriately used.
Yes, that's how we've used it in twenty twenty-four and also we can use it in twenty twenty-five that way. But yeah, we wanna reserve it in twenty twenty-six for the person who might will be in that role to to, yeah, for more external work, perhaps internal facing things. But the for internal training, there are also the on page sixty-four in people section under talent development, there is a little over a hundred and seven thousand dollars set up for staff development. Yeah, and so a portion of that can be reserved for.
Can we have a line item for like internal anti racism training lab? Where we can see like this is how we're committing or the, you know, like this is.
Like a specific.
We're putting like our money where our mouth is. This is how much we would spend.
I I totally hear what you're saying. There may be other reporting things that we could do in addition to whether we're going to line out or not, that would make that more clear. I think the different format in the director's record gives a sort of magnetic space in that kind of highlight area of we could share what's what we're doing that way. I think that that again speaks to multiple audiences. It helps, you know, mention the board of the best, but also contributes to the public and the staff, sort of a reminder of that. And I, yeah, we can definitely talk about could that training line be broken broken out more? Annual needs, E B P O, and I think as an example, we would change I L S systems. We may spend significant money on I L S training one year, but we wouldn't need to do that every year. So I think we would need to figure out a responsive way to do that by, so it didn't look like when when there is a big unique need that we're ignoring item priorities.
I kind of like what you're saying because that way, if we also do the training, that's not like another line item for us. And then from anti racism and then from staff training, like if we can combine all of that and then put it into a narrative elsewhere. Like Ellsworth is saying, it saves us all sitting down next year going like, why did this move by twelve percent this year? Instead, we could say like, we all know we pulled it from these different line items, but that gets board attention, the staff attention. It makes sure that that person still has budget without us having to change the the structure for the actual financing of it. But I I like what you're saying. I get what you're saying.
I think identifying, putting effort into identifying in a publicly accessible way absolutely makes sense. And and we could explore what those obstacles are.
And breaking it out so that it isn't something that will just go away when there's a different need. You know? Prioritizing it.
And I, so in my last position, I gave some strategic role setting around percentage of allocated funds for with bi-cohort populations, so different things like that. And one of the issues that we ran into was how do we define what falls into that category? So does that mean that a training on microaggression toward people with disabilities, do we need a separate category for that? Can a training, you know, can it be two, can it hit two targets at once? I think in the beginning, if you do building block trainings for equity and racism, it's a little more sophisticated. You get into more complex learning around it. I think that that might be a little bit less intuitive to say like, yep, you know, check the box for that one, check this box for that one. But we could, we could think through those things before we develop our model and then we would probably be others.
That's kind of like a creative.
I I feel like that, and part of me doesn't want to make it so that every year the equity and anti racism line item is solely for training.
Please check out any items you would like to take with you.
And I I kind of want that person to figure out how the boxes get checked, because I feel like they're gonna have the expertise to figure out how they put those in piles before, because you're right, once we start talking about intersectionality, it's going to get more complicated, but that's also the direction that we need to go is make sure that we do eventually stop looking at individual issues and start looking at intersectionality. And I'm I'm not qualified to figure out how to bucket those things, let alone assign a line item to them. But hopefully that person.
It could be a really interesting learning question to ask. Sort of what, you know, we would like more clarity in in how.
That's why we hired the.
And to kind of figure, I I do think there's something appealing about letting that person have a voice in the conversation. But before we hire somebody, we can also do some exploration of what's in the context. I think it's a really good question.
The other thing I just wanted to to spring up is like to echo what Ellsworth said. It was so great to have this narrative where you explain all this stuff. And I think, you know, one of the things that you wrote in here is it's actually only twenty dollars more per family in like the other town.
If all things were equal, it's a very, very shortcut way of, you know, like assuming every house was exactly, yeah, just, but yes, yeah.
Yes, but like that's like, that's like, you know, like when you say four point nine percent, especially, it's like sometimes it's hard, like what does that mean?
Yeah, yeah, what does that mean?
But when you say it's twenty dollars, I know when we were, you know, it was like, oh, it's like four dollars per person unasked or privileged that could pay them off. It's like, okay, that's, you know, like, oh, that's a lot bigger, whatever. So I was like, I think it would be really good for this like narrative of someone to do the narrative. Presenting, yeah, like set forth a narrative, like if we are raising taxes, which is normal, and of course, and it's good, and it's for all these good things. And I think most of the community would be behind that, but.
What does it actually come out to in in your case today?
What does it actually come out to? What does it pay? You know, like, they don't need this whole thing, but something, I don't know, I don't know, and this is.
Well, what are the, what are the reasons for?
Yeah, when when, you know, two years ago, when we had asked for like an eight percent increase, we did create some talking points. I think what you might be talking is like talking points for the community, talking points for the for board members to use, for for the staff to use. Like what are the things we're getting for that decrease?
Talking points and also in this part is, I mean, in this marketing, you know, it's like like actively talk about it, like actively talk about what we're doing with money, how, you know, how how we need money.
But also making sure that the data behind that is sound.
Well, I mean, it is, and so like getting ahead before like the community, like, oh, why is it, why is, are we getting another, you know, whatever, tax raise? You know, it's a big thing that people talk about. It's like, yeah, we're gonna raise taxes. You know, we're gonna ask for more taxes. We need more money. This is why.
No, I think that's a a good idea. Like, once we get down to a final budget, maybe that's something, you know, when we go to hand this off to the village, we say, okay, this is the percentage that the board is is asking for in their levy. And here are the, you know, top five reasons. And by the way, on average, it'll cost you, you know, nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. You know, per household or whatever. I think that would be, that would be good for all of us to have, just like, not to bring up the parking garage again. But like, it's good for us to have that information so that when we do confront people like in real life, we have some understanding of, well, here are the reasons why, and to your point, like this is what it shakes out to, you know, four percent sounds like one thing, but are you okay with twenty dollars? So.
And I think that we have a new tool in that conversation in the finance committee, which is a subset of the board that has a special interest. And and it's a little bit more involved in the the conversation leading up to these documents. So depending on how that would look and Callum's comfort with giving a face of that kind of content, I think it it, there could be a time there for sort of evaluating what that role does. And I think it's really reassuring to the general public to hear like, oh, there's, so we have a library board. And then on the library board, there's a group that's really, that's sort of self-selected to be extra involved in the budget. So they're coming to meet with those staff and they're they're learning and they're giving back to the, they're giving. So I I think that we can talk about what's to do.
We have probably about that as something new. I'm trying to make sure that I'm following, because we did have somebody, a board member who met with Billy and 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 followed the the findings.
It wasn't a very public.
It wasn't a committee. It wasn't.
It's a committee, but I don't think it worked.
You know, this is gonna be published and.
The new board is the the team.
The committee, yeah.
And I think that that, that's something that's easy for a lot of people to understand, like, oh, a committee is a group looks at that and that makes sense. I don't know, I don't have deep knowledge about the past practice of trustees.
It wasn't a regular meeting. It was meeting as needed and always one meeting before the.
It was just a kind of talk. And then, yeah, the public facing, you know, like you do actually go and market this.
Yeah.
Tell the story.
Yeah, exactly.
And the message.
If if needed, yes, if we had, we do as a board, it was.
I could be able to for like Callum and me, or you know, we can curate groups that can sort of illustrate that we're all working on this and we all feel good, even, I mean, I I also think it's great to be honest and say that's actually not the number for one. But but this is the number that we need and this is why. Is, you know, without making it dramatic, because it's fair. I think the community deserves to know what are the key decisions from our headquarters.
Well, I think it's also important for us in this process to have the list of the why.
Yeah.
These are the like not talking points to like sell it, but this is, these are the.
Boiling down our, our points of, yeah.
Well, I think that that's helpful for all stakeholders to have access to, because we know their staff also pay their bill rates with staff around sort of like whether that starts with my pay or salary, or it starts with a sort of curiosity of like, what, how does it work? So the more we can share that what we say, share that knowledge, it makes a lot of sense. And because of the way that our budget is done, where, I use the word disproportion, I don't mean in a way, but huge portions of our budget goes go to sort of single pops, right? So people, facilities, things like that. It's easy for people to focus on, you know, a five or six thousand dollar wine, because it's a provocative type of wine, right? But the more we talk about it, I think the more people understand, yes, every dollar, every dollar is important, but to understand the overlay. So that that these three expenses take up the bulk of the budget, so let's talk about those. I think that's helpful and it's not intuitive. Even people who kind of like math, like you have to walk people through so they understand, you know? I think that's what the scenario is doing. I think that's what the finance committee is doing. I feel really good about those.
So I'm gonna kind of drag this back to the agenda. I think Billy, you are asking now if the board has any requests of you and the staff for the next version of the budget. If the board has any requests of you and the staff for the next version of the budget. I would request mostly for my own curiosity. I know we already talked about having those percentages laid out and I think the idea we had is perfectly fine. I would like to know, because we have had very robust conversations on digital services in the past, I see that line item has gone down a little bit. If we know why, if we are confident in that assessment. Given my bad hoopla habit, I just wanna make sure it's gonna be there for all twenty five cents.
Which, you're talking about digital services.
Um. The subscriptions.
Swan, the subscriptions.
Subscriptions, we're down eight percent.
That's, that's different, subscriptions and services is different, that is not about your digital content. So, so subscriptions and services is like, like, um, I don't know.
Like a Adobe something, it's like a Adobe document.
It's the, it's. Oh, so this is the internal versus external conversation like we had before.
Yeah, there, there, now, there are some external facing things that are in there, but I think what, what you, I think.
It's like a Adobe and that sort of thing, right?
Yeah, there's, but there's a lot of things that get lumped into that one and, yeah, because, because we're a follow-up and our IT team and, you know, and with, with leadership believe. They know their expenses and they're comfortable with that, with, with number of their budget there, but digital content, now you're like in page sixty five. Digital content, where are you thinking of like?
Okay, and that went up by two percent.
Up, up by two percent and it, you know, it's a modest increase, but also remember, we, all of the leadership team and management team went into this budget, budget. Budget round thinking of how to maintain balance, right, like, what, what can we do knowing, knowing that. We're facing constant pressure on these, on these lines of expenses to increase, what can be done to kind of manage those lines? And I commend, you know, Bart Fitzgerald and, and, and the, for, for looking at this overall and making them. And making sometimes, sometimes hard decisions, I mean, yeah, I don't know if you wanna add anything about the digital content line?
No, yeah, I mean, it, it's, we've been paying a little close attention to like our usage trends, local, national trends, and so we really feel good about this number.
Okay, I think I'm more concerned with folks away from this table making the same misinterpretation that I just made. That digital services, especially having Swan there, that folks are gonna look at subscription services, Swan, and they're gonna think that that is. The content that they're accessing and there's been a lot of conversation in the community about the cost of digital access to materials and things. Is there any way that we can clarify that even in just a sentence on the narrative page moving forwards?
So, you know, I, in, in my thinking about the expenses, I really only focus on the people section, I can, you know, in the next round, kind of. Try to avoid explaining eighty lines of, of, but.
I don't want it to be, I just wanna make sure nobody makes a mistake, I just.
But yeah, subscriptions and services.
I'm with you, it's like internal infrastructure versus external, like.
Yeah, in digital services, it is a confusing, confusing.
Can you just put it from this external issue? I would be fine with that, I would, whatever solution.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just me, and I think it's like, I was looking at them in our subscriptions and services and it's like the licensing that we get to show movies, you know, and so.
Yeah. Yeah.
We couldn't really do that.
I don't want it to be too much effort, I just, six hundred thousand services.
No, we're right, yeah, and, and like, and like.
I, I hear the, I hear the direction about clarifying these lines and I think we can talk more internally to them.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't wanna dictate the clarification, I just.
Before, um, and it's down, but I thought. That went up significantly in past years.
What, what was that?
The, the digital subscription services.
It, it, it did, it did, subscriptions and services, if you're looking at that line, look at where it's budgeted at twenty, twenty twenty five, it's budgeted three hundred fifty four thousand. But look at where it's projected to be, it's at two hundred seventy eight thousand twenty twenty five.
Which page do you want us to?
I'm sorry, yeah, it's on page sixty six, sixty six, close to the bottom, in the digital services section.
And why, why is that?
Um, miss, miss budgeting, miss, um.
Deciding maybe we don't need something, you know, it's not like lower utilization.
I, I. No, 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 this is.
It's all internal, it's the tool.
Cause this is all internal.
We're, we're doing all the things that we need to do.
We're back to that, see, I, we just didn't clarify.
See, no, even, even I, it's like, I mentioned you did, cause I saw digital services, so I see, it's the, the digital services part that got me.
Yeah.
And so, so what IT has been doing is really going through that line and saying like, what subscriptions do we actually use? Cause we want to have, and so there's been a lot of like, we may have twenty Adobe subscriptions, but only fifteen people.
Oh, so like licensed, sixty, twenty, yeah, no, yeah.
So.
Taxes and, yeah, yeah.
Cause again, you said subscriptions and we just had somebody ask about digital subscriptions of magazines and I'm just kind of feeling, I was confused.
Yeah, that has been, I mean, that's been national, seeing those processes going up, you know, that, that was the New York Times, I was talking about that, so that's.
Yeah. 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 Lot of talk about it.
Lot of talk about it.
Right, but that's why, the fact that it's going down now.
That's not what this is.
Exactly, that's.
This is not that, that, that line item, library materials, digital content, it's going up two percent. This digital services, subscription services going up eight percent is internal.
I understand that, and in past years, we had that being raised. Right.
And a reason for why our taxes, we were asking for such a large. For internal, you had internal?
Yes, yes, but it was mistakenly interpreted as being the external resources, so being the, the hoopla and the. This, this snafu has been made before.
But the other way?
No, 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 the same way I just made it.
But the prices are going up?
Like we own your, yes, one, yep.
And, and that's normal, that's not, that's not necessarily misunderstanding what is needed. Some, I mean, this, the prices change, the needs change, there are, sometimes things are. You have to pay for each user of a certain software and then the next year there's a free version, that's seventy percent of the.
No, this was about.
No, I was, I was opposed to that, I think we just wanna be clear, like what is internal versus external?
I'm just confused, yeah.
Because in previous years, we have been told one thing is external, when in fact, it's internal.
Got it, okay.
I don't wanna make them a secret, yeah.
And I do think there may be some kind of, I don't know if it's like color coding, it's kind of too simplified, but. In terms of identifying what, like the library materials chunk of the budget, we could, we could probably do some kind of visual cue. Even if it's only on this part of the budget cycle, to help people understand that. I don't wanna create more conversation necessarily around this, but I do wanna know, library materials, so the external faces, so the bottom of page sixty five. Where we break out library materials, you can see the effort that went into keeping that balanced, so there's a point three percent increase across the board in that.
Yes.
This is an area that if we went above four percent, would be a priority to put resources into. It is not best practice to have a point three percent increase in materials line, that increase should be greater.
So why wouldn't we ask for more money?
So we could, I think what we wanna, we felt strongly about coming forward with that four percent, which is already more than what we, what our aspiration was. To see how the board felt, so at this point, we take direction as to, we feel comfortable with four percent. We'd like to, like to see a, a budget with a four point five, we'd like to see a budget with a two point nine.
Yeah, we can ask.
And then our work is to take that back and, and figure out what it would be.
So if we feel like the public has appetite for six percent, now is when we would make the ask capable, can you get us a. An estimate of what a six percent increase would look like, how that would be allocated.
But, but, what, what, what is best practice, you know, like.
Like nine or what?
What I, it's between ten and twelve.
So, um, I, I think it's to it, we do a little.
You're talking about just for the library materials.
For, it's.
Yes, so, so a low end standard is between ten and twelve percent of your operating budget should be going toward material.
And what, does it have a defined business period or is it just a random?
No, it's, it's a ten to twelve percent of your operating budget, which that would be a minimum of like one point two million dollars and you can see we're at, we're, we're just shy of that. So the, like, there is, yeah, there is room for improvement there, but again, we all went into this thinking, how do we, how do we, um, how do we?
I can't help, it's not as possible.
Well, yeah, we are just at it, so let's not get our percentage things mixed up here too, we're not talking about a ten to twelve percent, we're talking about ten percent. Twelve percent of operating budget, operating, which is close.
And we're pretty close.
We're close, it's close, it's close, but it's not, it, it would be just, that would be just to get to the ten percent, it would be.
Cause I mean, I, again, like if we're talking about the public's appetite, I think that's, that's in the narrative, right? Like, do we care if it's twenty, twenty one dollars? Again, not a perfect number, but.
Well, so maybe we ask Billy to offer us this second budget, like to compare, and then next month, we can look at like, what would a four percent versus a four point two five or four point five look like?
Yeah, could, that would be us.
And then stacking more funds to the library materials. I, I think I'm, like, what you've put forward today, like thinking about for all the work, I think it looks really good. I don't know that I'm really gonna go much higher than four percent, but like here, I need time, you're right, it's a need, so then like we should explore it a little.
I know that my trepidation in going over four percent is completely related to the eight percent that we have done previously.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's sitting in the back of my head, where we've had the conversation before it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was.
That's it.
I, I wasn't hearing, how that people, so that, that was what I wanted to ask the whole board, like what are we thinking about four percent rather than, now we're talking and it sounds like people are now talking five, six percent.
Yeah.
How's, like from a political perspective, how does it feel, like?
Can I just hear what, the rest of what you were going to say?
Oh, I, I was saying like the, the eight percent is sitting in the back of my head, because as we were talking about that eight percent, we had a very similar conversation to what we had today, which is. If we do three percent now, that means it's gonna be six percent another year. We did the eight percent to try to prevent having to do a second eight percent. The goal being getting to that, you know, giving back to a three percent to keep ourselves balanced and getting the, the balance being closer to three, three and a half. So the fact that Billy has tried that, having suffered through those conversations and still came back to us with. Four is really as, as narrow as we can get. I don't, I don't know yet what my opinion is on going over that, but I do know that it was, they, they were not fun conversations talking about. Eight, nine, ten percent going out to the, the community, because, you know, you're.
But we're not talking about that.
You're, you're right, you know, it's, it's twenty dollars, it's a hundred dollars, but. The conversation about this tax levy is not had from the perspective of how much money is going to the library, it is how much money is going to the village? And it includes all of the taxing bodies and so we will be included in that conversation from a percentage perspective. That's part, probably why it latched onto you, you're right, we should have a narrative about what, you know, what does this really break down to? Because so often it is a collective conversation of, you know, our taxes went up by X. And, you know, the library asked for such and such percent and, you know, so and so asked for such and such percent, why is the library asking for so much? And, you know, the dollar amount may still be less than every other taxing body, but that's not always how the conversation is, is framed.
Well, having heard money, we are such a small percentage, the library is such a small percentage of, of the taxes. That they're paying, that they pay, but I also. It is important when we think like the twenty dollars, that that's, that that is an average. And that they're, we're dealing with a lot of different, um. Very wide range of income in this village. And, you know, that, yeah, I just, I think we have to, we have to keep that in mind, you know, of course, there is also an obligation.
It's such a tension. Yeah, cause like the tension is that in bad economic times, people need the libraries, so it just, it's, um. I'd be curious to see like what, not like going crazy, but maybe just like an enhanced library materials budget might do.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I just, I, I just wanna know what would be best practice, because in the ideal world, we wouldn't wanna be doing that, right?
Well, in previous years, Billy, correct me, we've, we've asked before for sort of multiple side by side iterations, so the budget at four percent. The budget at five percent.
Hmm, I mean, I, we get various things over different years, we can, we can present however.
Yeah, it's like, the other thing is that, like you said, like you ended up having to raise eight percent or whatever, and we don't want to get to that point, and if we don't, we are not.
We didn't want to.
We, well, just a conversation, but if we are, we are right now not. Spending what we, what is best practice, then that's gonna accumulate, you know, like.
Does that compound in our previous conversation?
Yeah, that was, at the beginning of the conversation, Billy, you said something that we're asking for four now, so we don't have to ask for six or eight later, so you projected.
Oh, no, I, you guys had a point I was just making.
Is that with me, I'm sorry, I confused you, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I wanted to raise this as well.
So, yeah, all at the same point, yeah, like.
Yeah, well, similar, it's just something I was about to say earlier, is that just thinking about where the economy is heading in the next few years is something that is weighing very heavily on me. And I don't have a good sense of what your question is, was I share your question, because that actually would potentially influence what I would imagine what the appetite might be now. Given what I'm thinking. Oh, is what we're going to be seeing over the next few years, and so I would wanna make sure that the library is in a position to weather. Some of the uncertain turbulent times that are coming over the next few years. So that's why I share your question.
Yeah.
I mean, I think an example of.
Could you repeat your question?
Well, my question was, Elsworth made a comment that if we're doing four now, so we don't have to do six later, and so my, I was just wanting to clarify sort of that conversation, to say, what does this mean for the future? I know he knows, but.
We also have information, though, it's not, I mean, we, nobody knows what's going to happen.
I know, nobody knows, but he made that comment, so I just want him to elaborate on what that matters, to figure out what is not that future.
I think it's about asking honestly whether that's a conservative ask or not a conservative ask to meet the needs. So then, I think it's important not to suppress things that we need to do to hit the number we want to hit. So this means we can't resurface the parking garage, and we're gonna push that project to a future year. That's gonna hurt everybody in the end, it's gonna hurt the library, it's gonna hurt the community. But it also means asking for more money, and I do think that there are some really big, I don't know, tariffs to the library. As a lot of what we, a lot of what we do is less on purchasing and books go all over and things like that, so I think we have. We're working with the information that we have, but we could get to next year and realize that the purchasing power has changed. And that means we either get more money or we reduce services, even if we're still gonna stay in the market. So it's, it's all a puzzle and. I, but I, I think that part of my process and my goal process and around moving away from the three percent was thinking about that, was if we, if we. Think, okay, the benefit of the three percent this year is that, I think probably everybody at the table would feel good about not increasing the tax burden more than three percent. Could we technically live through the next year doing that? Yeah, we have to reduce some things, but we wouldn't have to shut down, but the next year, we would be faced with harder choices and a harder narrative. And I think if we're relatively not with other taxing bodies and we can justify what we're asking for. That's what we remember more than what percent answers was.
That's true.
I think if you ask the community like, for any taxing body, walk me back as far as you remember. For the number that D ninety seven asked for, the number that parks asked for, I think that people will remember variables, I think, so there was that one year that, that was really big. I, I, that's just what I would guess, so I feel like the incremental increases, but being really honest about what we're advocating for in all respects. And I'm also not opposed to sort of, you know, tightening your belt during, during tough times, you wanna be a team player in the community, so. But I, I think that the four percent. Makes sense when you look at the needs and I think we could, we could do a model of four point two five or four point five or four point seven five, or whatever the, the board wants to see. That would give you a little bit more tangible, like what, so what would the difference be? As we talked about it, I, I think that the difference, the percentage difference, but the value of that. Doesn't, doesn't feel as big as I'd love it to, like the, the saying we're going from a three to a four feels so big, when you look at the actual dollar impact.
So when you say it was like a hundred?
One hundred fourteen thousand dollars, so point two five is worth about thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars.
So it's worth it to go, so it's worth it to go up to two point five to be a little bit.
I think, I think with what I'm hearing here is that there's an appetite for perhaps like a little bit, a little bit higher than four, if we, if we know we have no expenses, like materials being example, where we could increase them a little bit. Like if you're saying we have that leeway to show and we could then see what expenses we need to then adjust, I think we can take that back and we can work, work on that.
And we can speak in more detail at some point about concessions than I can, I think. We're already active concessions in that budget line, because materials are expensive and we, on one hand, we can never really meet that. Like we'll never have every, anything that everybody wants, but we're having deep conversations about access to subscription digital materials, things like that and. You know, you said earlier about, you know, session, the library is a place to be, um, I think that's also our rule to think about, what are the. What are the resources that people will echo of first from their individual budgets that we have a role in? That we have a role in.
I'm thinking a lot of like during COVID where the resources that the library had to provide.
Just like digital was.
Yeah, just a lot of things pivoted and, you know, everybody here juggled and jostled and pushed things where they needed to go. But to do that, there had to be the, the financial operating room. And so it, I don't know, we are looking at it from the perspective of what is the community going to need in.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a tension to name, like that we just have to make a call. And so I'd be curious to see a comparable chart to that. But I think, I was gonna ask too, like Lee, maybe next time if, like, I don't know, I just would like to know from your perspective, like what we would be losing out on? Like what materially it would look like to take a four percent versus a four point five or four point two five, like what we might lose out on?
I mean, just a question, I mean, like we spent an hour talking about a dollar for parking and now we're sort of willy-nilly saying like, oh yeah, let's add
Well, that is.
two dollars to every household, like, uh, you know, they did work a long time on this four percent budget and now we're asking, uh, it seems like kind of out of the blue, what if the budget was more? So I kinda just wanna know why we're even.
Oh, fair. I guess from my perspective, this is what my third time gym budget, like you guys are right.
Why are we talking about this? Like, this story is a tough ask.
I, I mean, we've never received a modest budget first, in my experience.
Is this a must?
So usually.
That's what I don't understand.
I mean, I feel like this is.
I'm sorry, usually we've received multiple budgets to look at and like the first one being like, this is everything we want. Like that's how it's been for me in previous years. So like this is everything to keep our library at the esteem it has, at the staff it has, at the, to do the best we possibly can. And so this one, it sounds like your narrative that, that the teams are trying to think very responsibly, which I appreciate. But like, I also don't wanna affect services. Like that's the tension always, I.
There's typically.
And so, no, I don't wanna put extra work on the team and I don't want a team to not have what it needs. So I think that's, yeah.
That's true.
Yeah. Um, I ju- I wanna jump in here and say like the budget, there's a lot of work to go into this, creating this budget, um, a lot of intentionality. We've built on our experience from last year, creating that balanced budget. I would, I would say last year, we, we started that conversation of like, what can we really, we knew that we had to overcome that operating deficit. And, uh, I think presented a first draft of some, somewhere in the three percent um increase uh last year. But this year, this draft here is almost good enough to approve tonight.
Yeah.
Like I just wanna like say how much work went into this. I like, I usually don't have this level of detail and level of accuracy on some of the people numbers at this point and it's, it's in there. Uh, we could get by on approving this budget tonight. So I know some of the numbers may move around in the next, you know, next two weeks as we firm up some numbers. But what I hear is there is an appetite for perhaps like if we are truly saying that something is needed, um, like perhaps we can include it and see what that, and see what that um.
So then, but the process that you went through this year is, this is a more precise representation?
Um, I feel like we're, we're, we're ahead of the game in a little more accuracy of where, where we are, but we've built on the experience that we learned from last year, so.
So typically, calling the gap like kind of, it would get more precise with each, with each step.
As you said.
So that's what we're talking about going back and asking for something else, cuz that's typically what we've done.
And it still will, it is. It's, it still will. I wanna present a more precise one next time.
And I, I guess, I called this, I called this modest because like I don't see what I could take away from it. Like I think that's why I'm calling it modest, is like this feels really.
Tight.
Tight, yeah. So like I think if I, if we voted this in today, I would tell the community like, look, our staff makes up seventy-five percent of the budget. Staff costs are going up almost six percent. Look at how amazing we are at only four percent. Like that to me would be a really easy kind of um talking point, but I just, I want our library to have what it needs to be at this, yeah, that's the period. That's what I want.
And I, and I think the community, I mean, we represent the community, we think the community would also want that.
And so I'm not saying to go crazy and I don't wanna put extra work. If like the collections team doesn't see this as a concern, then it's not a concern of mine either. I just, I guess I heard you all say tonight that it maybe is one of the areas.
That is what I heard. Do we do this in the inverse from what, cuz previously we would then say like, thanks for the five percent, Billy, can you show us four percent? In the case of what you've presented now, do we say, for the most part, we feel comfortable with this? However, we understand you may have scraped some things that the staff would really like to get back. They're not necessary, but they would really like to get back. Can you present us a budget that includes some of those items? So rather than giving you the number, can we give you that request?
If, if we were saying like where could we, um, I, I don't wanna use this term lightly, but like basically like where, where is more cushion needed? Like where is more like a little more wiggle needed, where we might have like scraped a little too, too hard to get to that, um, to get to the four percent? Yeah, I think we can certainly go give that direction to, you know, the leadership team and we'll talk about this tomorrow.
And, and then we can see what, what that percentage, rather than giving you a percentage, you tell us what that percentage is after.
And, you know, what I've been hearing from a number of financial, uh, people in the, in our community is, um, you know, don't forget to ask for what you need. You know, it's important to, you know, have a balanced budget, but don't forget to ask for what you need. And that's also what we talk about internally is like, it's, like talking out of both sides of my mouth when I'm saying like, we need to control expenses. We also need to know what you need, cuz I, I, I don't want someone to not tell me what they need because they're so concerned about controlling.
But not having what you need can create greater expenses down below as well.
Yeah.
And I think the work that has gone into this part, obviously would be totally one for another draft. And it's well documented what teams sort of asked for originally, what we might have run back and said, hey programmers, like what? Can we get that down a little bit? Like, you know, could you, could you do it with? So I think that there's, there's much of the questions there to work with.
So you would not be too heavy of the.
No, no, this is normal, normal. Like, yeah, it's just this kind of opposite of it. Instead of trying to show a lower, um, we're given, we're given the opportunity to perhaps look, look back at what we might increase.
So turning this back to the agenda, um, we made a, I'm sorry.
Sorry. This is not for tonight, but I do wanna think, I think I talked to Ellsworth about this, about like alternate incomes for future, you know? So that we can be more robust financially. So that's, I just wanna put this out there.
Okay.
We'll have a future conversation.
Um, we gave a couple of specific requests around clarifications of things that are here. Other than that, as a board, our request to Billy and the leadership team is that they take a look at these items, see where they have maybe scraped too close to the bone. What may need to go back in? And then next month, we would be presented with a budget that would have those things added back into them. And from there, we will see how far that moves us away from the, the four percent.
Yes, and I, and I would just request that in addition to sort of the objective numbers, a little bit of subjective support and understanding what that means for our collections. So like, if you say like it's not best practice, it should be this, should be that, like what does it mean for the collections? Like how, in subjective terms, will it, will it feel that they are, their needs are?
Like what is it that came out that we're putting their gain in line?
I know, what I want is a sort of more qualitative explanation of the impact that that's gonna have. So if it's point three percent or is one percent, I wanna know what that means. Because I'm not in political, I'm not in collections, I'm not understanding on my, in my everyday level, what the difference between point three and one percent really means for them. And so I would see. Yeah, 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 they're like, what that means for them. So what I hear, yeah, so, um.
Collectors will be really open to do that, cuz they will both have quantitative, as in what are our whole ratios, what are our wait times on electronic? And, because these are, these are our staff that, that have actual dialogue with patrons who are saying, I wish you had this if you don't. So I think the collections actually feels like a really sad place to look at this.
And this is where digital content lives. And that is, digital content is in terms of, and Libby and that sort of thing. Does, do these figures involve any more reductions in what, um, what patrons can use?
It does, um, specifically around hoopla. And it's a decision that honestly many, many public libraries are making, which is, we would all, so right now we're at ten borrows. We are looking at decreasing that to five. We've done it at Chicago Public Library, this is in April, like yes, those numbers are in this budget draft.
And additionally adding a per month cap of, of totals.
Yes, twenty thousand.
Wait, say that again?
So there would be the five item loan cap and then collectively twenty thousand dollars per month expense cap.
What would happen when you hit that cap?
So maybe there would be more.
We have to do no more.
Yeah.
Oh, so even if I haven't had my five borrows?
If the library hits cap.
I'm like, this has been in the news, this has happened because it's prices, because it's so much more astronomically expensive to have digital books than.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and when taxes go up, which they inevitably will, and then bar, hoopla borrows goes down, we're gonna need to be there to explain why that is happening. Which leads me to a recommendation, suggestion, idea that I had, which is, and, you know, it's just an idea, but it would be great to facilitate some public education about these shifts and changes that are happening in digital publishing so that the broader public understands what these pressures on libraries are happening.
No, that is already happening. Um, there are emails drafted to our patrons again, is that explaining the landscape, why we made this decision, what this actually looks like in like real time?
Awesome. And I, I know, that's great. And even to supplement that, I mean, like a, I don't know, talk, talk or forum or like if there's something.
Advocacy.
To be on the committee.
We're in a committee to talk.
Like tomorrow, I'm gonna be for half of the day, meeting with the hoopla, and other, and other directors. So, I mean, these are, these are timely, I mean, additions. And it's something that everybody is trying to figure out. And I do think balancing the thinking about equity in terms of what is our taxing burden, what do we have available? Not just in materials, but in other services, that is very complex. And what equity looks like for one person is different. I mean, it's such a different experience than anywhere you are, um, in a number of different categories. So, um, I, I love this kind of conversation and I think as this group comes together with lots of units in it, this is, this is foundational to where we go. So I, I appreciate the energy and the patience and the effectiveness after nine thirty. You're still have some agenda.
We still have creative.
That, um, just to, to, on the hoopla and Libby kind of that era, one of the things I was looking at in the ten items to five items is like, um, for youth. Like I can see the, the, that being a bigger issue than for adult. Like, you know, if it's per month, so.
Plus ten on that.
I was gonna say, yeah, ten kids books.
So actually, so Libby is our more popular digital resource. So seventy-seven percent of users who use hoopla do not even hit that five borrow limit. So we felt comfortable and like, yes, there's a small amount of power users that will be affected, but seventy-seven percent of people.
Not nice, you guys.
So you said seventy-seven?
Because of power.
Seventy-seven percent of users.
I don't want to have power in those.
Well, that's why I was trying to think through things like children and, um, accessibility. And, um, I recently like checked out the same title in hoopla and Libby because I can have one of them in text and one of them in audio for my training, for my cochlear implant. So that, all of that just like made me thinking about, you know, think about, like, are there kids that are doing that in the kids books? And like just what are the, what are the types of issues of, um, accessibility that we may not be thinking about around digital, um, research? So that's what I'm just.
I don't think we're gonna, I think, well, I'm hoping Ellsworth is gonna get a lot of help making exactly those arguments to hoopla tomorrow. Cuz I don't think we can be the only people, um, that, I mean, I told you how I learned to read.
Right.
Uh, we can't be the only people that would use resources that way. I mean, maybe we just go back to books on tape, maybe we start buying cassette tapes and everyone's a Walkman and.
You cannot stream from those, which I learned the hard way.
You can't, but like, maybe we're gonna have to, you know, or maybe the community comes to us and says like, no, you know, ten is as low as we're, we're willing to go. And then that's, you know, that's our responsibility to try to figure out.
Well, that's what I was, you know, for adult books, okay, yeah, you know, I don't need ten per month, right? I'm not gonna, okay, maybe some of us do. But children, and children with particular needs, that's why I was just, yeah.
Children also get a lot of access to books and audio books through school, and there's, there's also other resources.
In a park, yeah.
I recommend everyone come to the finance committee meeting.
I'll be there.
Bowman's on the team, but everyone, it's a meeting for all board members and for the public, so September eleventh.
I know, those are open meetings, whether it's just Colin being busy or if it's the full board, so please don't hold back.
Yeah, I mean, did not talk about the capital expenses, but given time, I don't, I mean, they're all laid out there. You know, the capital expenses will, will, um, you know, we talk about a balanced operating budget, the operating budget is balanced. The six hundred and seventy thousand dollars planned capital expenses will, um, would be, would be dipping us, dipping into our, um, cash reserve or into our fund balance.
Can I make one other request? How far, and, and not for now, for next time, how far did we get previously in a new master facilities plan? Because my, my understanding was that we had not started on that, the last master facilities plan we had, we got the results just before COVID. But it looks like maybe some of that planning had started last year or now? Okay.
Um, I know it talks about, but it never actually, never materialized.
Okay, maybe we should dig up the old one and see what was in it. Because I know that's a, that's a costly thing.
I, I opened those files and it's all pre-pandemic stuff, so it's all, like, I mean, there may be some use for it, but I think, um, I think referencing the material, but I don't think we'll reuse the material.
No, 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 not reuse, not reuse, but just, we're talking about a, a master facilities plan, like so that people know what is included. When we're talking about, you know, why does it cost? Why, why are we budgeting this amount to do it?
And that, and that's just from the consultants, you know, but yeah.
I, I remember.
Okay.
Um, any other requests for Billy? Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Ellsworth has great faith in us that we can review three additional action items.
I love canceling a policy.
These are, yeah, these are, these are, these are. Non-sufficient funds check fee policy. I think it was super relevant, whatever was last looked at. Like I said in the, in the memo, truly, this just isn't used because we, um, I don't, I don't think I put the numbers.
Or checks.
What's a check?
And my adult children don't know how to write checks.
So, and then part of this is that, um, anyway, we wanted to go to it. Yeah, very few checks. I clarified with our legal representatives that this does not take away the library's right to pursue funds owed. It just would mean that the formerly twenty-five, now thirty-six dollar lost check fee, we would have to pay that, which I think is, um, a, a risk that I would want to take. And if we, if we went into a scenario where checks became a problem, pay it again, we can read it in this.
I was saying, we can resurrect and revise the.
So I recommend a related.
Twenty-three years.
I propose to accept this.
A second.
I'm not even having an emotion.
So I have entertained a motion from Christina and a second from Colin, uh, that we would accept the elimination of the non-sufficient funds check policy. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? And guys in under five minutes, all right.
So surplus property is, that's kind of going the other direction. So we're sort of adding to this in lieu of striking the policy. We went to Ashland Clinic with the idea of moving the, um, materials section of this policy out and putting it into the collection strategy statement, um, which they fully supported. They also felt like since this has been reviewed, there's, there's been some changes, it would be wise. They also felt like, since this has been reviewed, there's, there's been some changes, it would be wise to include in the policy. So you'll see that there are more references, um, to the Local Library Act, um, in the policy. I, I struggle a little bit with balancing that with accessibility, but I think in, in this very specialized policy is appropriate to, to make those sort of legal references. Doesn't make for, for fun reading, but, um, so the biggest change, it's really a cleanup of what we need to have in that policy, you know, twenty-seven years later, and then the idea of moving the materials into a place where it felt more organic.
When was the last time we used this policy?
I mean, I think that we visited when we were, when we were getting rid of something, um, but it was out of date and didn't have accurate information. It's one of those policies that, um, when we need to pull it out, it's an important thing to have. So if there was a violation of improper disposal of material, we would have a policy to go back to, to so that we both align with legal requirements and that we follow our own policy. Much of what we would be getting rid of falls into the lower value categories. And I think the important distinction that this policy makes is that, that, and probably any value, uh, can be donated or given to other tax-supported library members. Some of the things are just sort of, again, creating policy to support practice and protecting us in case we decided to donate shilling to another library that, that couldn't be brought back and said, you should have done something different, you follow our policy.
Um, and I was gonna say, any discussion?
Um, in terms of the question about accessibility, um, we can, uh, put that down later to our tone review that will happen in the next round, but I, I think that there are ways to make this sound a little less legalistic while still referencing the law. Um, we don't have to do that right now, but I, I definitely think that we can, so.
Do you want to put it on a list for a second review?
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, I, I, I think it's important to get through these policies and I don't want to hold this up any further, any, any, any further. But I would just, like, I, I understand in the here and second, your concern around accessibility, and I think that's a really important thing to make language as plain as possible. So is now a good time or would be a second round of view, another, another?
We're all here.
Um, like, I just think that instead of saying things like in court, in accordance with the Local Library Act, we can say things like, the library follows the, the Library Act seventy-five, I, whatever. This law says that, you know, um, this is just an example of how I think we can just make this simpler. Doing it right now is, but I'm. I need a minute, I have to.
Well, we could approve this version now and then ask to see a more accessible version next month, that's probably the review, or would that be too soon in our, I know we don't have our formal plan laid out, but.
It will be under just three, next time, and we don't have much of a conversation, but, I mean.
I think we can just probably put it to the next, this is not.
I mean, I, I can talk about this all night. Uh, so I think if you approve as is, that we don't accelerate the sort of tone and accessibility review, um, at all. The next round that we'd be going through will be three years from now. So in theory, you'd be hitting every policy every three years. The benefit to, to going in the life cycle is that you don't have twenty-year gaps, where you're, you're able to look a little bit more deeply, because you're not also just creating more activity. Though, though often we think that need to change, right? I mean, three years is still a long time, but I think that we, when we get to that point, we may also be able to say, okay, we can do five, five of them, because we're, we think there's lost content to correct, so we can look at them more for tone delivery. Um, so I'm not saying it would necessarily be six years before we get to the end of the project, but I think it's probably more efficient to do the sort of cleanup one round.
I would agree.
The other thing is, I think, we can prioritize tone and accessibility on more public-facing policies over something like this, that is not as much public-facing. And those I would like to do tone and policy where.
Simultaneously.
Yes, I can't separate those. This one, I, I hear one hundred percent what you're saying. That it would be, you know, it does seem like, oh, but let's just say in plain language, but.
Yeah, this is the educator in me coming up, you know, like, policies are also an opportunity for public education, it makes an opportunity for public education.
Yeah, I just think this may not be the priority policy for that.
I agree.
Yeah, and there are, there's the definite one hundred percent, I, I don't want to let go without putting it to them.
All right, I am currently entertaining a motion to approve the surplus property policy as is without any, without addressing any other tone.
So.
A second.
Moved by Christine, seconded by Annie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, um, last item, collection strategy statement.
So this one, I described to staff as mostly technical. We really only added that piece and, um, I, so we're moving the part about collections from the surplus property policy into the collection strategy statement. So what was edited out, section A, from the last policy is edited in to this policy, um, in the, the deselection section. I.
So basically, the last one we took out, any collection items, it was just addressing other physical items, right? Which I think, yes, good.
And I would say this is a, a more public-facing, they're all public-facing, because it's more used as a public policy than the one we just talked about, um, and was much more recently reviewed in twenty twenty-two. So, um, it's, it doesn't have that gap or something to do. I apologize, I, I must have used the template from the last policy and I didn't change the recommendation, which still kind of makes sense, but the recommendation was.
I was missing something.
I, that is a strategy I use a lot of, in this case, it didn't work great. So all we're doing is moving that piece verbatim into this policy.
And a collection strategy statement, that one does seem like significant in these terms.
Yes.
And also is written, I might add, in a very accessible format.
Just what was, was recently, there was quite a bit in, in the, the last review, um, and this one is, um, one of the handful of policies that, that we are required to review more heavily. So my recommendation is we, we, we do count this change, if it's approved, as a revision, but we leave it where it would have been in revision schedule, because we're, we're not doing a full revision. So this one, we'll be back in front of you sooner than three years from now.
Okay. Well, it's three years now, isn't it?
Twenty-two to twenty-five, yeah.
So does this slight change count as our three-year?
I mean, I think technically it would. I think we'll bring it back, um, sooner than three years from now. But by taking the action to approve it, that would fulfill the need to, to do the.
Was there a, a tone that you wanted to address again?
No, I was saying, I think that this one's written in a tone that is very accessible. It explains the purpose, it's very, it's, I mean, understandable, yeah, yes.
All right, do we have any other discussion? All right, I will entertain motions to approve the collection strategy statement.
So.
Second.
Moved by Susan and seconded by Annie. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? All right, uh, statement is approved. Um, as we've mentioned earlier today, we do not have a closed session, so as we have reached the end of our stated agenda, like, to move to close the meeting.
Emotion?
A second?
Moved by Colin, seconded by Annie. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, staff.